Sounds all set, you ready to go? Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting, special meeting of the North Oakland County Fire Authority. May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, eleven thirty AM, it's an in-person meeting being held at Station One. Do you do a roll call? Eric? First order of business is to approve the agenda. Are there any? Any comments on the agenda that is presented? Would you like to make a motion to amend these, this agenda?
To. And then the agenda to only have the sixteen business discussion of this for your twenty twenty five.
Okay, is there support for that?
I support you.
Any, any comments, discussion? Okay, big roll call?
Tyler Snyder? Yeah. Ganda?
Yes.
Winja?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
James can have two votes. Yeah.
Okay. With the amended agenda approved, we move on to item six. Still talking good? Listen to it, I couldn't hear. Okay, the purpose of this meeting today and this agenda item is to come to a resolution on the difference in the budgets that were approved. Between the two counties, Rose, which approved an eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollar budget and. Holly, which approved a nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget. I, I think the, the way that, I, I think we should proceed and I'm not, I'm not sure on this, this is new to all of us. It's the first time we've had one of these budget impasses and I've cooked them all I can fill. It's not like the start by understanding from Rose, from either member from, from Rose Township. If you could give us any insight into your reasons for, for voting for the lower amount? And if that could give us any insight into where we should be working on the budget? Or are either of you willing to give some?
Well, I'm also. And to give you some background, with Rose Township, we have, our, we funded our fire authority with two. Haxes and one was for point seven five mills and the other one was for one point five. We renewed these mills, I believe, in two thousand fifteen or sixteen and these. Amounts, we raised about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the current. And we've always had a surplus that we carried over one year from next and two years ago when we had. We raised and we were having big increases in the fire budget, which we approved in the year two thousand nineteen and twenty. And at that time, I thought everybody, I was worried not to have enough money to fund this. In the current year, we funded out of general fund seventy thousand dollars for the current year and. So, and we had, other than that, we had, that was all we needed to. As of today, on June third, we're gonna, I'm gonna have approximately eighty four thousand dollars in the fire fund. To pay the amounts to, um, the line personnel, depending on how, what we come to. I have a shortfall that is three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that we, that we have. And I have one more year that we have in two thousand twenty two, we're gonna go up towards a renewal of the, of our. Of taxes that we're having, even, uh, we're approximately, because we went from two point two five down to about two point oh two, two point oh three. To me, to go ahead and I, and I looked at this, we would have to double our mileage to support even the current. The current year, uh, budget on this, so I asked and when I, and. Well, that's pretty much where we're at, we're dependent on boulder, um, inspired. Millage to fund these things and we are at, we're gonna be short at least one year, the coming year, I would say, because so happened. If the milk, when the milk is renewed, I assume that is being renewed for this kind of station, our new milk will go into effect the summer first. Two thousand twenty two. So I see, so what we did is when we looked at this, we, we have tremendous shortfall, which is gonna have to be covered from the general fund.
I meant to add that from two thousand seventeen, we have the. Two thousand dollars and if we were to went with the current number, it would be. The nine hundred and twenty, which is almost a double increase and that sort of money. And, and about it.
Because of the head of the amendment, we cannot, our, our revenue store up, but certainly not proportionate to the amount of. Of the crisis in the township, so, you know, we, we'll wind up going up. Maybe by CPI and maybe something a little bit higher because of there's new homes still, but so we're limited as to what we have. And we won't. So I'm in that pretty much my position.
So, so what I'm hearing is we're bound on money use that part, but.
And we're committed to making up the difference and we always were, because two years ago when we did this, we were, we talked about it at, at our team meeting. And we're committed to, uh, meeting our obligations, however, at the same time, I remember the chief said, well, he said, well. Take up the people from a safe program and that was nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one and he, and. In my recollection, let's say, chief said, well, this is gonna be it for us, that's fine, but I was remembering thinking, well, this is gonna be fine because. We don't have any money in here and we're gonna be short one year, we're gonna be short in the year coming up. So I was obviously surprised when we got the budget, I did not say anything at the time because I did not realize I had gotten all my final. Money set from Oakland County and to see what was going on since then, I got my final numbers and they posted and. I'm sorry about the patents up here of the fire fund and we will be short. Assuming the original budget was adopted by three hundred and seventy five thousand for the July payment and then. And then we would collect our money in February twenty two, so our net deficit would be about three hundred thousand dollars, we will have, we will collect money. So at that point, I says, you know, we need to do something about this budget for one year because I'm expecting that we're gonna have over a hundred thousand dollar decrease. Every, every year like this, so.
So, but what I, what I hear you saying is that we're running deficit in, in Rose and we have been running deficit for a year.
No, I didn't say that, we, we ran deficit last year and that was the first time. And it was standard seven thousand dollars.
But if your mileage is only bringing up five hundred and fifty eight thousand a year, you must have run a deficit before that, or you had.
We had, we had, we had a cumulative surplus, we took two, so last of this, we always had a accumulation every, every over many years. And this was pretty much used up, uh, last, last year or this year, but it's, it's gone.
So, so. You, you can't be present here or, but you can beat yourself up, why, why did you settle on the eight, moving funding from Rose from last year versus? The nine twenty, both of them are over budget, but what, what, what in, in that budget does eight eighteen is a good number, nine twenty is a bad number?
The eight eighteen, from my perspective, was just a starting point to open up discussions. That was not, I felt that this was a good point to bring up and to bring up other discussions on how, what to do about this.
So in general, you're saying the increase is too much, we need to sharpen our tools and speed our speed in the budget. You're not unfolding fast, you personally, you can't do the board, you're not building fast, you gotta be in your butt.
Exactly.
Are you within the same place, Daniel?
I didn't feel like we should go backwards, I didn't think we needed a reduction in previous years, so that was my thought. Every year, it seems like. We need money for personnel, keep the personnel, we, we get those raises, I think. Was it two years ago, we gave two dollars an hour? And then we, given these increases, but it's always, we always get to the same point when we go through the budget, it's always the same problem. I, I don't know how to fix the problem, we, we hiring more people, we did a program, we made a raises, we bring people up to higher standards from what they were making previously. But we never really get to the point where. That problem being, you know, like we're beyond that problem and. And we're always being promised that, you know, Rose Township will have the cover and that's always been an important thing to me. And like I said, it practically would have doubled within the last. Four, four years, five years?
Five years.
Five years. And we still have it not at all. And I have a problem with that.
So, so I'm actually hearing some specific policy things that, that I think is kind of separate from the budget because it is just blind and you don't get the whole picture. I, I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page of this, this board voted to give raise. We did that.
Mr. Chair?
I think on five oh.
Uh, actually, it's kind of a good lead in, what Mr. Snyder said about, I, yeah, I was gonna kind of summarize some stuff that led us up to. Where we're at with these different budgets and the needs and options. You may allow me to indulge me and.
Yeah, I, I will, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna touch on a few things, in various conversations I've had, there are people, I just wanna make sure that we understand some, some. Operational issues that we're gonna have to make some money decisions on and probably came to be so. One of the first ones for me is, is this station coverage thing, what is our current standard covering? The two stations, station one and station three?
As far as manpower?
As far as manpower, it's, it's, we're, we're committed to doing a twenty four seven.
So during this five years, and I use this five years because it's a focal point and, and when I get to discuss this, I'll go into that more, however, it was. Well-supported and the intent was to cover both of the stations with full crews, minimum of two people. Twenty four seven, three hundred and sixty five days a year. That is what we continue to do, however, due to, again. Lack of applicants, uh, losing of personnel due time commitments, you know, regards to the time they have to put in for this job. Combination of wages and benefits that's are, in my opinion, not where they need to be yet. We continue to struggle to fully staff. Twenty four seven, three sixty five. We have, I wrote down, I'm going back to October of last year, just for example. Nine open shifts in October and mind you, this is after. We've begged and pleaded and offered this and not that, up till the day of that shift to get people to fill that. This is after the fact, after we've done this or paid overtime or begged and pleaded or bartered and we do it all to try to get. People to, to cover these shifts last month, so this, I got nine, nine open shifts in October, ten in November, seven in December. January, we were able to get everything covered.
A shift is, you know?
A shift is a twelve hour shift, either day or night. February, we had five open shifts, March, five open shifts, April, we had eleven open shifts, but again, April was when we got struck with the COVID outbreak. We originally had thirty some open shifts that month, so eleven's not bad after, after that month of having that. And, and as of today. For the next five days till we get to the end of May, we have seven open shifts.
So, so what happens on open ship that one, one person stays?
We, we try and try and try and communications go out, uh, up until. That shift starts, I'm trying to get people to cover, hey, we, hey, I will offer this or hey, well, uh, we'll take, can people piece it in? Somebody takes six hours and, and somebody could take two hours and somebody could take four, we try everything, okay, up until that point. When it comes down to that shift starting, we have to make arrangements, let's say we're, we're short one person. I mean, we've got two people covered here, uh, on, on the schedule, we've got two people here, we've got one person down there, but we don't have that second person. What we do at that point is. That second person down at station three does not. Or still responds to the calls with the ambulance, they can. This, this unit up here also goes, we also put out an acknowledgement before that shift to everybody that, hey. The station three only has one medic, you know, one base support, that, that queues in on people that live down that way. If we get a call down there and it's something urgent, you know, that they're, they're gonna run with their own vehicles there and nine times out of ten that happens. I know the question has come, well, why do you choose? When you're in that scenario to have station one staff with the two people rather than Rose Township station? The answer to that is geographically speaking, you drew a circle, a five mile circle around each station. And then encompassed what the majority of the calls are, geographically speaking, in each township. Majority of the calls in Rose Township are in the trailer park, the Fenton Road corridor, the north. And the north ends of both Hickory Ridge and Milford Road, that's where a lot of the population is at. So I play the odds as far as why this station gets staffed before the Rose Township one does.
That, that's a great answer. Tremendous detail, the, the cost of trying to cover whole stations twenty four seven with at least two personnel. Is borne out just in wages, overtime pay. Raises that we've given, try to attract more people, there, there is no other line item that would call out trying to staff both full time?
No.
Okay.
No.
What, what's, what's our policy on the ISO rating?
So.
I, I know we have a great one, I know you've improved it drastically in the last several years, but, but.
When I took on this.
Policy to stay at this level, to increase it, to decrease it?
When I, when I was brought on as the chief of this department full time in two thousand five, one of the, the top goals. That was on my performance review for the next ten years, that came directly from the residents and the board members at that time. Was to improve our ISO rate, we had ten. ISO rate, which is the worst you can have. Every year, we slowly added to try to improve that by the equipment, the procedures that we had, mutual aid. The, but most importantly, the staff, staffing is one of the keys to getting a, a good ISO rate. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we're finally able to, to do that. We had an audit and we had had audits prior to that, they happen about every five years.
Did you move up in steps from ten to something, to something?
We moved up from a ten to a seven or five or, or two, well, we moved up from a ten to a eight and then an eight to a five. Um, and then in twenty, again, twenty seventeen, we had our, our last big audit and that's when we. We threw all the cards in and said, we're, we're ready to get to where we go, we had staffing now at all stations. We had the admin personnel that were also additional staffing during the week. We had mutual aid agreements, auto aid agreements in place with our neighboring, we did, uh, practical. Tinker shuttles and response to show and, and we got a three, which is awesome, I mean, nobody, nobody can argue that.
Is that, is that full coverage, is those the corners that are not, right?
We have very, very few spaces that are in some of the, you know, outlined corners that don't meet the five mile radius for the station being in that and so, yes, they are.
What are they, they're timed? They're still timed.
They're still in time and there's nothing we can do about that until we build future stations.
So, is there a cost associated with staying at ISO three? Certainly the people.
The cost association, the biggest cost factor is keeping the station staff.
Good.
Because when they come back in another couple of years to do another audit. And they ask for that information and they go back and look at our, we have to give them, it's the most forensic thing you've ever seen, but we have to give them.
They're gonna look back.
They're gonna look at our schedules, they're gonna look at the, the training hours and manpower hours at the station.
Are we in danger because we're not covering now?
Be, yeah, it's okay to have a couple of shifts here and there a month or something, that, that's tolerable. When we start getting into the numbers which are just listed, that adds a lot of unmanned coverage at the stations. They don't look at it as, oh, well, there's one person there, so that's good, that's not how it's formulated, it's formulated by a continual. We had, um, six people, even though, you know, three, two may have only been at one station and, and four at the other. They add those, it's, it's a tally of the, the hours add up, not who's at the station at what time. So when we start to hit these kinds of open shifts, it, it's gonna take an adverse effect on, on that overall formula. Like I said, it's one of the main categories of your ISO score.
So is there, is there a fallback from three to four or three to five or something? What, what, what is our risk right now with the shortages we have on the, uh, on the duties?
I don't know that I can answer that, there are so many factors that go into the, the rating audit. I would imagine if we took out the, uh, if we, if we got below the threshold of the manpower hours, that we would probably lose a couple of minutes. At least.
Good.
Again, it's a big factor. Because it cuts our, not only cuts our staffing, it cuts our response times in the ISO, and then the response time is the time to get, you know, boots on the ground, water on fire. That, that type of stuff.
Okay, so, so, so both these items then are, they're not policies to staff full stations twenty four seven and to have. An ISO three rating for the majority of our coverage area and your original budget envisions us doing that, right?
But, our budgets over the last five years were working to continue that model, yes.
I've got a few questions on ambulance recovery, your, your ambulance recovery. You actually show a going up a little bit in, in some of your certain budgets here, uh, over.
Our calls are, yes, our calls are going up.
Such as a big percentage lost?
Yes.
Is, is, is there anything else that we can do to get rid of the write-off? What, what, what's, what's our policy about writing off the huge number that we do today?
Uh, most of the write-offs that we do are self-paid, meaning that person did not have any kind of medical coverage. They have no means of paying it, we, we, I mean, there's a process that goes through with the billing company. Over six or eight months of notification and try, try and collecting on that. About every three months, quarterly, I get a packet from them. It's usually got anywhere between ten and, ten and twelve, eight or twelve accounts, if you will, in it that are still outstanding. Half of them usually are within like, uh, under a hundred dollars. Uh, balance, um, if those are residents. That live in the townships, I, I rate those off, um, because to send them to the collection agency to recruit ninety dollars. We're gonna spend over that for the collection agency to take each one of those, the court attorney fees and so on, plus their share of whatever they get back.
But you don't feel there's any way to improve, this, this is what it is, you kinda have a multi-year track record of.
We are, have always done outstanding in our cost recovery compared to, um, the region and the other municipalities, uh, other agencies. Private and public that do cost recovery, I will give you an example, um, right now, for twenty twenty, we averaged. Four hundred and fifty, fifty two dollars per call net that we profited after write-offs, after contractual agreements with the insurance companies. Our net was four hundred and fifty dollars, four hundred and fifty dollars per transport. The Village Polly, uh, their number is two hundred and sixty. Per call, so we, we. Are well above the average, um, for ambulance cost recovery because of the staff that we have, the reviewing process that we do. The, the timely submittals of, of the billing to our billing company, um, response if there's an issue with them. The way that we track and go through, book in the write-offs, um, or those that we send to the collection agency. We, we've always been at that higher standard.
Yeah. What, what is our policy on mutual aid costs?
Mutual aid costs?
Do we absorb the entire cost of us going on mutual aid run?
What type of a mutual aid? Fire or, so fire mutual aid, um, there's no cost recovery unless, very, very rarely. For instance, we had a fire in Milford last year. Milford had a fire that, um, we went to as, as well as many other, um, agencies, it was a large fire. The cause of that fire within their own district was. It was actually, it was a unlicensed marijuana grow place in the big hole barn that they had that was next to the house. That, so that, so Milford is, because of that, is, is going for cost recovery. Whether they'll get it or not, who knows, but, um, at that point, they, they send out notice to all the departments, they respond, hey. Give me your costs for that run, you know, your trucks and manpower and stuff and, and because I'm doing an invoice, I'm gonna spend cost recovery. Will we see that? Probably not, we did have another instance in Highland years ago where we had, um, the auto parts store that caught on fire. Right downtown, um, they were able to get cost recovery and we were reimbursed for that run, whatever it was, a fifteen hundred bucks or something like that.
That's not standard.
But it's very rare, very rare, mutual aid is mutual aid. They, they do it for us, we do it for them, now, when it comes to medical calls that we go on and we are seeing more and more of these because the EMS, private EMS companies are, are pulling out. They're, they're no longer in Highland, uh, they're not in Springfield anymore, Springfield's waiting, um. Huge response times, you know, for, for starter to come, um, but, so when. Um but when, so when we go to a mutual aid recovery, that's where we're transporting, obviously, we build that wrong. Um we don't, we don't give them any. Special treatment, if you will, if they don't pay, you know, I don't write anything off, that that goes to collections. Um so now we do run some of those calls where we get there and uh that patient, for whatever reason, didn't. Necessary need to be transported. And we we call it a sign of release, uh we don't, we don't make any of that. But again, well, the overall majority of the calls that we go to mutual aid, it's usually a a serious type call that they're calling us for. Otherwise, they'll wait the thirty minutes for the private ambulance to get to that person if they stub their toe or whatever, so. Um you know, I would say seventy to eighty percent of the time, we're transporting. That patient and therefore it's built. Um I'm always keeping a watch on that and I talk to the surrounding area chiefs that we run EMS calls on to let them know. We're available to do some calls, there's a gray area there. But if we notice that, we're either getting called out on necessarily frivolous calls, non-emergency type calls. We're not gonna run those, that's something that you guys can handle or they can wait for the private ambulances. Um and the 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 second factor, if you start calling us too much. W- w- we're not going to do that because we're not going to take away our residents.
You monitor that just.
We monitor that and there's been many times where i- in the in the third factor is, we're already out on a call. Let's say the station's out on something, station three is covered and Highland or Springfield calls us for a medical. We tell them we don't have any. Unless we've got some kind of a backup crew that happens to be at the station where we have that thirty ambulance. But if we've got two ambulances and one of them's out, and we don't have any other crews, and somebody else calls us, we don't go. We go, we call over the radio, tell them we can't respond, and tha- and that's, that's an understanding that we have with the with the agencies.
Yeah, and and the the costs of mutual aid again are like other things, they're spread out here throughout everything. Because of people's equipment, it's it's not, you're never gonna find it online.
No, um and again, uh as far as fire mutual aids, reciprocal um. With any type of a house fire that's confirmed, uh with the system that we have in place coming like. Uh there's there's five, four or five departments that are coming to that post town for a fire automatic. So, you know, do we try to get cost recovery? I don't know, I mean. They don't try to get it for months, it's, we need the manpower, it's it's part of the ISO guidelines to have that in place.
Okay, two more, two more things, I need one maybe quick, but uh I I just learned that we have. We run the second largest uh academy in the States and it's well regarded for fire and uh and the um. Good. And I think that's really cool. Does it make money? Does it lose money? Does it? How how other, other than training people and getting them to be better?
It doesn't lose much, I'll tell you that, it doesn't lose.
Does it help in other ways? What 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 is the net effect?
Captain Seal runs the fire academies.
Right.
Sergeant Miller runs the EMT academies. They they happen every six months. If there's an EMT academy going on, when that finishes, the fire academy starts up a month or so after that and it rolls, it's over here. It's gotten more and more popular, we get really good feedback and has put us in in the top in in both classes in the state. Both Captain Seal and Sergeant Miller give me budgets prior, month prior to the class starting, I request a budget from them. Based on the amount of people that they anticipate are gonna be there. Um what the charge, what they're, what he's gonna charge sometimes, well, like for the fire academies. Um and EMS academy also up until last year for the EMS academy, we were getting uh reimbursement back from the state of Michigan under fireworks. Uh so whatever the cost of that class was, um including all the instructor wages and.
Up up through last year?
Up last year, they did not approve funding EMS academy that actually just started this week. Um they had limited funds and decided to distribute it differently than they had. Uh Captain Seal's fire academy class that just ended last week was was reimbursed. We get that, we'll probably see that in the next month or so. Um but back to the the budgetary aspect of it, um they they both present me with the budget. Uh some of it, or most of it could be reversed, like fire academy, but we also. Charge a user fee, if you will, for the classroom. They have it here for the electricity, for the wear and tear, uh you know, replace the carpet or. Okay, it it's minimal, it's it's, you know, it could be, you know, two to five thousand dollars. But that's, that's netting a profit above and beyond where everything else is paid. Um so there's that factor, so we don't lose money on it, if anything, we we make a few bells on it. The other plus is it allows us to put any people we have through those classes and not have to pay for them. If you were an outside agency like Milford or Highland and sending people to the EMS academy. That's a twelve, we're charging twelve hundred dollars per person right now. Um if it was the fire academy, it'd probably be just about that much also. So uh not only do we make a little money out of posting it, we also get the reputation of having it. I'm hoping that it continues to grow and we're able to even make more on it. But also allows us to send our people through at no cost loss, so it it saves us thousands of dollars.
So so um when you say it actually makes money, that's that's all in. That's covering uh personnel that are doing the training, that's covering, you said, stipend to the to the building.
Books, materials.
All in.
That, yes.
Correct, but but only a percentage of your trainer's time, just while they're in the academy. Not their their salary, it's the whole year that you're covering.
For the instructors?
The instructors.
The instructors that are having, oh, Sergeant Miller, Captain Seal, they. They, yes, they get paid a separate wage based on their budget for running that academy. But they don't run it during their normal hours of being here, those academies are run at night, they're running weekends. So they're not double dipping, if you will, they're they're doing their work here and and responding to the calls and working your duty shift, getting that salary. When they run their academy, they make their own separate rate for that. They're the instructors and and that's part of their budget.
So so you're making, you're making money on the pay that they get while they're instructing, not while they're out on on the entrance or?
Correct.
Okay, makes sense, um do 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 most departments pay for their employees' training?
Yes.
So if if we didn't have this academy, we would pay for. A newbie to go get fire trained.
Anything that has to do with them being part of their job, we pay.
That's that's a real savings that we're showing them, okay. What what's our retention like after we train someone or is that, is that the same retention problem?
It's the same retention problem because they all sit through the original uh application period, the orientation, we tell them, you know. This isn't, this isn't a second job, it's a second career. Um this is what you have to look forward to, even after you get done with your year and a half of schooling. You know, you gotta maintain your training levels, you gotta maintain your uh EMS E credits. Uh you have to show up to the calls, you have to work, you know, we expect you to work some shifts. Um and they're all, yeah, okay, yeah, but then when reality sets in, they, every one of them, I just. I know you told me to, I just didn't expect.
Do you ever try to recover costs from any of those, or is that not a thing?
We've tried in the past to do things like we used to do uh. When we were paying for people to go to school, like a EMS class or fire academy. We would have them sign something saying that, once you complete the class, you you have to give us at least one year.
You can't hold them to that.
It's very difficult to hold them to and it just really kind of fell through, um. There's not a whole lot we can do about it, I I've come to the point now where we used to write off the bat the day that. That they were hired and they went through all their paperwork, we measure them for uniforms, I'd get those ordered. Uh you know, it's a small expense, but it's, you know, you know, three, four hundred dollars by the time you get a couple pairs of pants, a shirt or jacket. Um and then before the stuff would even arrive, they'd leave, they're they're gone, so what I've done, at least to that extent is. We're gonna make sure you're gonna be here for a month or two before I even buy you uniforms. You know, you can have a generic shirt without your name on it and get some, starting to stack up on some, you know, just plain, plain uniform stuff in the back room. Um because there are, there've been a ton of times where. We we interviewed somebody and hired them on the spot and I placed their uniform order and in two weeks, they're, now, I can't do this. Um and then, you know, the next day, uh their three hundred dollars worth of uniform shows up, which is embroidered with their name and. Can't send it back, it's already been purchased and customized, so.
That's all I have, unless one of us has some policy, like, questions, do we understand?
I have a question about the um. You shifted recently, you think the board that we wouldn't, wouldn't be having the full-time staff filling duty shifts any longer?
No, all of our our admin staff, which is Tim Seal. Sergeant Miller and Assistant Chief Wild, those are three administrative personnel, they all do one twelve-hour shift a week. Um Sergeant Miller does his on Monday, Captain Seal does his on Tuesday. And Assistant Chief Wild does his on Thursday, they do one twelve-hour shift a week. The rest of the thirty-two hours, outside of that, they're doing their administrative responsibilities, which keeps them, keeps them busy. If it didn't, then I would absolutely put them back on rotation to duty shifts, and every one of them knows that. We had weaned them off, um what was originally, well, if we go way back, they were all working. Shifts, but as the responsibilities grew and we grew, you know, I came to the. Board meetings and would say, you know, for the last five or six years, we need to take them off of another shift. They they need two days to work now, so we've gotten, you know, we've weaned them off from from, you know, two or three days that they were doing that, but. I have no intention of of pulling them off of the ship that they are at now, I think it's working out good, it balances right. Um because with all of the work that the three of them have now, um. There there's no way we can, we can put them on more shifts. They they do fill in, in fact, uh Chief Wild, um we had an opening today that we couldn't fill. Um he's working, that, he's working a duty shift today. Um he's not getting any more money, you know, he was supposed to, his admin, regular admin day today is eight-hour day.
Also, you use the three of them even fill in.
Absolutely, absolutely, and all three of them do that from time to time. Um so uh you know, they they do do that occasionally. Um they also respond, it's when we have a call, second medical, third medical. We all get up and go, you know, and grab the ambulance, or obviously, for all calls, car accidents, fires that are out there here, if they're here working. You know, we respond it, so they they do uh do a little bit of everything.
Okay, because that, again, was the purpose I got of hiring new people on paper drafts and to fill the jobs and. So they were filling more and now they're filling less, but sometimes they fill in. But it's, again, I just seen, we keep trying to fill that hole and um. And you keep giving more money to fill the hole and the hole's not getting filled and the.
No, it's not, and it's because we continue to see more and more of an increase of people that are just not willing to. Participate with me and paid-on-call first. Um it's the whole reason that for the last five years, um you know, I've been trying to. Get the wages up, the hourly wages with the paid-on-call and part-time, um I've been trying to. Build a a full-time person every, every couple of years because. The full-time employee seems to be the only thing that's working, that's staying, that's consistent. Um the paid-on-call, again, um if I may, kind of go over this, but you know. Um we did start talking about this and and again, it's the reason I put that addendum piece of paper there with the uh budgetary cost centers only. Um that's, we really started to hit hard on this five years ago, George, you remember, I think that was one of your first meetings where. Where you found out that these guys were making twelve or fifteen dollars an hour and you, I think, almost had a heart attack. Um. Well, and and I think, if I may, I think it's important that, because I know we have a lot of public paying attention to this meeting. At that time, we were paying somebody that went through all the training to be EMT and all the training to be cross-trained to be a fireman. We were starting them at twelve dollars and eighty-four cents.
Right.
And a shift crew leader at McDonald's that time.
Right.
And we're asking this guy, so we did, we started there, I I think the other thing that's important, we can get back to what you were talking about as far as. The retention is the fact that, and both Diane and I are members of Orange County Township Association Supervisors. This is not a problem that is here at NACO only, this is county-wide. Every township is having a hard time hiring, hiring people, lifestyles have changed and. There aren't as many people that want this kind of a lifestyle that used to. I mean, we hear it from Highland, we hear it from Bloomfield, we hear it from Waterford, they're all having manpower. I mean, it's everywhere, everywhere, everywhere out there is trying to hire, is raising wages, we're seeing fifteen, eighteen dollars an hour. Bullfrogs is offering a twenty-five-hundred-dollar signing bonus for an employee, that's, that's how bad it's getting. And the race to wages is is something we all have to remember. So when I turned into. Uh hamper this was roughly a little over five years ago. We talked about the wages and many of the board were like, you're right, we got, actually, the whole board was in support of, no, we gotta do something, we gotta raise that, so. The plan back then was to, you know, we can't do it overnight. Um so let's start attacking it little by little, budget year by budget year, and then so we get. These wages where where they need to be. Um and so that's, that's, that's what we we did. And and that uh budget primary cost centers expenditure sheet that I laid on your table there. I mean, that shows you from fiscal year twenty seventeen. And the personnel cost centers, we've. Uh well, you included the the original proposed budget for FY twenty-two, um that's what we've invested in. Strictly personnel, all the other operating supplies, that's, and those are all minimal increases over a five-year period. The personnel costs have gone from six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars five years ago. To, you know, one million, three hundred thousand this current year, that's. Yeah, i- i- but that's what this board five years ago supported to invest into that. And 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 we've, we've now gotten the wages currently from the twelve to fifteen dollars that we talked about. Five, five, five and a half years ago to seventeen and twenty, but it's not enough. It's not enough when you look at, I just drove through Taco Bell and they had a thing, they're hiring at fourteen dollars. Um we have employees, I have an employee that, again, paid-on-call employees. Part-time shift employees that that would fill in more shifts, but they make more money at their other job. I have a, I have a employee that works at Walmart, makes twenty-two dollars an hour. Why would you come work for seventeen dollars when you can work at Walmart for twenty-two? Um we have an employee that works at MedStar, private EMS company, just to give you some some um. Comparables in the field that we're in, MedStar, uh EMS up in Genesee County, twenty-five dollars an hour. And that's just for an EMS, they're not cross-trained firefighters, um MMR. We have a employee that works at MMR part-time, twenty-nine dollars an hour, they're paying, and again. It's just for paramedic, they're they're not going into house fires and car accidents and rescues, um so we're.
I'm I'm sorry, when you say it's just for a paramedic, this is a guy you're calling to your house.
I I don't mean.
It's not just.
It's not my intent to belittle it. I'm just stating that our personnel are all cross-trained, not only are they, their paramedics are EMTs. But they're all the firefighting and rescue and extrication and ice rescue and um technical rescue and hazmat. And we're paying them. And we're paying them ten and twelve dollars an hour below what somebody that's just doing EMS calls makes.
I, I do want to add one point, hey, when, and you're right, four years ago, I saw that, I thought you were kidding. After that meeting and before the next meeting, it's when we decided to start moving that wage. I went out into the general public, just the people I talked to, the people coming in the office, the people that I work with in town, and I just threw out the question, I said. After a guy gets trained to be a fireman and he cross-trains to be an EMT, what do you think that's earning wages? Not one person guessed under twenty dollars an hour, when I told him twelve eighty-four, their jaw dropped, and I thought, you're kidding. So it, it, it is a problem out there.
And, and my point about all this is, we, we started to do this five years ago, we continued with it slowly progressing, so it wasn't a big hit overnight. Um, I understand that Rose Township has the financial difficulties that they do. But we, you know, again, we've also somewhat promised and supported to get to a certain point. That these guys are, are making what they're worth. Combine that with the, the hiring issues that the whole sector is seeing across the country. Combine that with the current people that we still, that we have on, that continue to, to try to, to keep up with it, but ultimately can't. Combine that with this last year going through this pandemic that scared the hell out of a lot of people, especially the workers. And this is just not the right time to slam the door and say, we're not doing any, anymore for you right now. I don't know what the answer is, and I, and I appreciate that there's a funding issue. But if we don't continue on what we're doing. And try to continue to, to fix this, we're going to continue to lose people, we're going to continue to have more open shifts, I, I know we are. I've had my pulse on this for fifteen years, I, I've seen it happen, I, I come to the board. Just about every board meeting to mention something about the issues that will happen. We're not there yet, we're, we're not, we're not to the point where. Where we need to be that. Hourly wages make a big enough impact. To maintain somebody.
Yeah, but having said that, I agree with absolutely everything you said, even if we gave everyone a fifty percent raise. And that is climate, you're still gonna have it. There are still employment.
We are still going to have issues, we're just not going to have the, as big of issues.
Yeah, so it, it's not a cure-all, it's, it's a piece of.
What I'm saying is that, right, what I'm saying is that we've been putting Band-Aids on it up until this point. But it's, it's, every year, it's getting worse. At some point, we need to just at least slow it down, because at the rate we're going, with the amount of open shifts that I. I went over that, we have, it's going to continue to get worse. So again, a part of the, the budget stuff was trying to put Band-Aids on that, paying overtime, putting another full-time position on. Um, raising the wages, do we have to do all, all of those? Obviously, we, we can't, that's why we're here discussing this. But what I, I guess what I'm telling the board is, I think to, to, to keep us where we're at. Means we're not going to do anything, there are no increases, there are, are no, uh, ups and benefits, there are no. We're gonna keep paying our, our people to come to training twenty-five dollars for two and a half hours of their time at ten bucks an hour. These are ideas that cost money. But I'm hoping and, and trying to prevent the slippery slope from continuing to slide. Because that's what we're seeing, it's not getting any better.
I agree with what it was, but about a year ago, it was a two-dollar, two-dollar an hour raise to the on-call. You recall that?
We did. I think the on-calls have only gotten a dollar raise over the last five years, I think the two-dollar raise came to the. Was for the duty shifts.
Oh, was it okay?
Yes.
That was the, the twelve eighty-four.
I think we went from the twelve dollars up to fourteen and sixteen or something like that one year.
We did, we did two dollars one year and three the other, I don't remember which one was.
Uh, actually, I think we did one dollar, I think we did two dollars the first year and a dollar the next couple of years after that. That, that's got us, it, it's, it's been five dollars total that.
And, and you came back after we did that and with some good news, it looked like you were able to attract new people.
We were.
That.
And then, and then we lost them.
Covid happened and all sorts of.
And we lost them.
Yes.
Cause everybody else keeps jumping.
Don't get me wrong, we've got, um, we've got two or three individuals that are. On top of everything, they're, they're doing shifts, you know, from, from academies we've held over the last three years. We do get a couple of good people. That are workaholics and they learn the stuff and they're working many shifts as they can and, but. We're gonna lose those people, cause those are the people that as soon as they get enough experience behind them in a year. They're gonna go put in an application somewhere and make twice as much money as they're doing with a full-time period of department with benefits. So that, that's the other side of the coin. Yes, sir.
What are paid-on-call people getting? We, I, paid-on-call, where do you pay them at?
Uh, so the, let's say the lowest, somebody with, um, just basic. Fire certification and a medical first responder, and we've got two or three of those people still, um, they are making seventeen dollars. An hour.
Okay, well, we've committed to bring them up to twenty-one at some point, that's my understanding.
Yes, um, somebody that is a, the next step up, EMT with firefighter is eighteen dollars an hour.
Okay, they're not at twenty-one, no, we don't have any.
We have, we have people that are paramedics. That have a fire engineer level on top of that, which is a dollar extra once you get your fire engineer. Um, that are at twenty-one, but there's few people, and not very many.
On-call, on-call, yes.
The question is that there are always gonna be departments around with the hot fluid, water purers, whatever, that they, that aren't gonna be paying a lot more, we can never catch up with those people.
And I'm not saying that we should be what they're, at, at the level that they're paying right now.
And, and, but this is a constantly moving, um, problem, is that we, we pay one, hired, and the other, and people with the more money pay. They keep, um, going up. How many people like Rowland and Fenton, I saw the, the articles that were sent, and I read them briefly, because it came in, like. And it seemed like we were certainly in the mix, we weren't at the bottom of any place, we're in the upper, uh, percentile, we're above fifty percent of all of those. Fenton, some of the other, um, places that you sent me, uh, articles, and we were, I looked at them, I did notice that we're at the bottom of any. We're above fifty percenters on, on all of these.
When, I, I don't know what you mean, when you say we're.
Well, when I said, is, when we look at, when we look at the personnel cost and things of this nature, we were not, it didn't look like we were the cheapest or what have you.
Oh, no, no.
We're not certainly, so, I mean, we're not, I'm not, we're never able to compete with the big departments, but how do we compete with. Departments like ours, like what is Fenton or Rowland or, you know, Highland or Springfield, or some of these people, I understand that all of these. That there is a, um, shortage of people.
So, all of those departments that were in the tri-county county articles, those are all Genesee County departments, I think we were the only Oakland County department in there. Um, mo- most of those Genesee County fire departments, back all of them, they, they don't do transport. Um, and very few of them even run on medicals. Uh, they have, uh, Genesee County has privatization companies within their county that run all of their EMS calls. Um, so there's that fact. No, we are not at the bottom. Uh, and, you know, some of those departments, I believe one of them pays twenty-three dollars for their paid-on-call response hours, something like that. Other, other people do a, a, a base wage, let's say twenty-five dollars, and then for every hour, it's, uh, seventeen dollars. You know, there, there's different, different mechanics in it, but, um, as I stated in my article. In my, my week that, that they posted my stuff, all of these departments are, are going through this. And they're all going to have to make a big change in the way that they pay their people. It, it's. We can't live like we were twenty years ago, it's just not feasible anymore. So to those other departments, the Grove ones, they're, they're going to have to change their. The, the, the way that they operate your fire departments.
Well, they, didn't they just go through a paid decrease?
I, I'm not sure.
So, because the department didn't want to join in, not.
No, only last for so long.
I did, I did have one question. Paul, you mentioned that, um, you have two millages, one's at point seven-five and one's at one point five.
Those were the original amounts, they can go back, I guess, to about two point oh two.
Two point oh two, and you said that you collect, that collects five hundred and sixty-eight thousand?
Yeah, for the current year, it was five hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
And you had to take seventy thousand from the.
That's what we appropriated last year.
But last year's portion was eighty-eight, yeah, confused.
We had a carryover, that was for our, our carryover from, from, uh, I had a carryover of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
There, okay, I just knew that one didn't, and I'm, I'm wondering what I missed.
So that was the whole thing, going into, when we go into July, we usually, last year this time, I had a quarter of a million dollars. This year I had eighty-four thousand.
Okay.
And, um.
So, uh, I, I'd just like to wrap up with just a couple more bullet points, um, you know, the board did. Agree to support the Safer Grant position. Four years ago when we got that, we came to the board and said, we got this grant. Uh, it's for a full-time position plus some added benefits for hiring people and equipment and stuff like that. The board did promise that they would fund that. What date?
Or what year?
It would have been.
Word.
Tim, Captain Seal, is she still here? Oh, there you go, no. What are we, twenty-seventeen?
It's, it's before seventeen, cause I.
Oh, your number fifteen.
I'd have to.
Is there really an requirement to keep the person on board after using a safer grant?
No, I mean, it was, it's, the intent of.
We, we agreed.
The intent of the Safer Grant is to continue to fund the position once the grant runs out. Um, Tim, what, uh, do you remember around the time that, that grant got awarded to us and we, we, uh.
I have a motion from December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, the motion is to approve the additional full-time position grant funding.
Yeah, the period of performance, so the actual.
Okay, thank you.
The motion was not to support going forward, I just want to clarify that, because I do remember the discussion.
I'm not saying that we had a actual legal motion, it was. Part of the discussion of accepting the grant was, it is the intent to continue. You know, this person's, um, job after the grant, and, and the board was all in agreement with that.
Tim, speaking for myself, because the motion did not say that, I'm gonna report that motion, just because in four years, I didn't know where we would be at.
It wasn't a motion.
Correct.
It was just a verbal.
But I'm just saying, if the motion had changed afterwards, I would not report it that long. Because you don't know where you're gonna be for yourself, but Waterford did, they, they had to lay off a whole bunch of people, so, in my mind. Um, I was glad that the motion did not have that, I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
What, what did, can you read that motion again?
Um, motion, I just, I said, I'm for a grant, Bruce, well, security group, get additional of full-time position grant funding.
I, I guess I'm not arguing with you that you guys did a motion and approved it legally, I just.
Well, I just wanted to tell you how I felt, and I supported that one, and I wanted to look into it, because it has a few times that we. Approved it as a board, and I guess maybe as a board we was, but I just, I'm telling you from my personal, when I voted for that. Um, I'd recommend it to, uh, for the, um, I would not have, if that motion had been taken anything.
There was, uh, just last month, the board approved the increase for the dispatching, that was seventy-four hundred dollars additional to the budget. Um, two years ago, when I attempted to come up with a plan for a pension for the full-time people, which was denied at that time, but. Several board members said that they would support doing a, a two or three percent increase to the current four oh one plan that we had. Um, so again, that was another factor to the original budget I, I proposed. You know, there's, there's, again, I, I guess my point of this is, there's things that not necessarily were made motions by this board. But it was understood, crystal clear with intent. That this is the direction that we were gonna go, and these were some of the items that we were going to put into place at some point. So, I, I guess again, to, to finish up my, my, uh, comments on this, um. To either suddenly halt that or go in reverse. Um, from a board standpoint to the department members, I, I. I don't think you'd have, I think it's gonna be devastating for, for a situation that we're already trying to dig ourselves out of.
Thanks for the clear, frank question.
Yes.
Transport, we, we had asked some time ago, probably over a year ago. For an analysis of people working in the transport business, uh, what, what would our cost structure be like? And the response at the time was to be de minimis, the, the amount of, of savings wouldn't be much. Your comments about Genesee departments in the article make it sound like. Transport is a large portion of, of costs, and they don't, they don't, they don't do that, and so they actually have. Uh, savings because of that, what, I, I'm missing something between those two, I've, I've analyzed something wrong, I'm trying to understand it. And then, and the following to that is. Did NaF, the NaF board at some point. Both decide, choose to go down the transport EMS, uh, path, is that, is that a, a thing that happened? By approval of the board? I, I don't know.
Absolutely.
Okay, yes, that was.
That was way back in the early two thousands.
And was that something that, that needed township approvals? Because, because it would have been come out of the budget, right, so the townships would have approved the budget to support it, okay, what about the transport cost?
So to answer your second question, um, those departments don't have. The licensed personnel, the training, the continuing training. Um, the added cost of investing in the big cost items, the ambulances, the, the, you know, fifty thousand dollar. Heartlight packs, the, all of that stuff. When I was asked a question about what if we took away, because we're already in there. It really wouldn't have much impact, we'd still, we, we, we have bodies at the stations that are covering for any other type of call. Right, a fire, a, a car accident, uh, trees down, whatever.
We've never crossed.
Right, so, all of our people are licensed, we have all of the equipment, um, so. If you factored not doing medicals. Really, in, from our standpoint, we're missing out on the four hundred and some dollars of revenue that we bring in doing medicals. As opposed to a Genesee County department. They would have to spend hundreds of thousands, millions, millions of dollars to transition. To get to the point to run transport, it, it, it's a very slow-moving thing that took us. Five, six, seven years to even get to advanced life support.
Great answer, great clarification.
I do know that I talked to one chief that has turned over their transport to private sector because of manpower. And so we can't get the people to run it.
But here's the challenge, we have that manpower. Yeah, the change, we have that manpower or anybody's.
Yes, Paul.
I would give you about a thousand runs a year between the township. What percentage approximately is EMS?
Uh, at least seventy.
And so for that motion as well, um, I probably your president needed with no shot there and actually either of the first was on the phone. Um, it was the Michael move.
But I just wanted to comment. You asked a question. You said seventy percent, I think. I think between the two, you were asking, answering different. You asked, what percentage was EMS for transport?
No, he said EMS.
EMS. But that, but that's not transport.
No.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Well, EMS and transport, that, that, or, or. Let me rephrase your question. What percentage is fire that we have out of the route enough?
Thirty.
And that's including, um, that's including auto accidents and things like that.
Yes.
Certain, I don't remember that's missing is what percentage is transport?
Out of the. Eight hundred, let's say eight hundred EMS calls. Uh, we transported about almost five hundred.
Just those are the ones that you gave me.
Okay.
Yes.
The other ones, yeah.
That's, well, that's why that.
So, so Chief went and put together some potential budgets. He called them. Option one, option two, the option two. Put in a lot of time to do this and try to do a, a real, a real look across our, our costs so that we can have. A great discussion about this. So I, I really appreciate that work, Chief.
Um, as you see on all of the budgets, um, I put, I listed obviously our current budget that we're in, the original proposed twenty-two budget and then three options. Yeah. I did not touch anything under the expenditures besides personnel. Because everything else is a, the operating cost that is fixed. There's really no wiggle room in any of those categories to change anything. There's not really any huge increases. If an increase at all in any of those cost centers. Um, the only other cost center outside of our. Seven hundred personnel is the capital replacement line item. Which tends to get used to fill in gaps throughout the rest of the budget. So, um. I guess if you just want to bring your focus to. Those cost center expenditures.
Well, I want, I want to have one second and I'm going to be, I'm going to be told. We're all amongst adults, but. My goal today to walk out of here voting on a budget. I, I don't have any goal for the numbers. I have the goal that we, we walk out of here with a, with a five nail vote. Um, for a proposed budget. Will we get five now? I don't know. But what I, what I do know for certain is that if any members of the Holy Township Board, three members of the Rosemont Board. Vote for this, it would seem a logical implication that you would then go back to your own boards and support that budget in front of the board. If you vote against this year, then, you know, all bets are off. But. I find it a bit disingenuous to be in here and vote, send these to the townships and then not support them actively. And so with that being said. If it's included, you agree or disagree.
So you're asking, well, I just want to say, well, to, 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 to actually say when we get the board, you want us to actually commit at this time to provide it ourselves at that board meeting.
I would like each of you to convince that you want this budget, that you are agreeing that this is the proper budget to go forward with it. And if you don't think it's the proper budget to go forward with, I would expect you to vote it down here so that we have a very clear direction as to where we're going. I don't think that's an unreasonable request. If you don't like the budget that we're voting on, then vote it down so we can continue the discussion. Because time, time's a waste. We have thousands of thirty effects. And so I want us to come out of here and if, if, if it passes, if it passes three, two, then, then we have a problem. Um, but, 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 let's work through this relatively quickly if we can. Chief also gave us a summary page.
Yes.
Of the three options.
Yes.
Uh, talking about what, what that means. Um. I think it's, it's relative important to point out. That in conclusion, uh, the chief has volunteered to take a wage reduction to cover the cost of some other employees. And I think that's, that's a lot of, um, it certainly is not something that I personally think is, is the right thing to do. But I do, I do appreciate that in the, in the budget here.
So I think it's important to mention that not only in these two budgets, it's taking away production. He's not negating a raise. He's actually taking his salary back. To. Less than a wage. That was approved in the last budget.
So. Chief, if you would walk us through, I don't want to go line by line. I think your summary covers where, where the pain points are. Uh, what is, what is option one? Option one is, uh, two point, well, a two point two million dollar budget. Was eight hundred and twenty-four donated from, donated, um, contributed by each township. So what is that, what does that look like?
The option one budget, um, is six thousand dollars per township over what our current budget is. There is absolutely no, um. Wage increases for paid on call part-time.
So that would take them back to prior levels?
Going to keep them, keep.
Where they are right now.
Where they are right now.
I have a question though. Before you go further, could you please clarify what the difference is, you know, while I'm aware of. You know, you have a paper and you, you know, you have a, well, and, uh, but what is, what is exactly is part-time?
So what we consider the part-time are the employees that consistently do the duty shifts. They're also paid on call.
Okay.
It's just really semantics. Um, but we do have. I don't know, probably a dozen or so people that don't do duty shifts.
They're purely on call.
They're purely just respond to the off-call, off-call.
So people who are consistently doing duty shifts up to a certain amount, you consider it part-time?
Yeah, it, again, it's just a name that we give them. They're not. It's just something that's kind of evolved over the years. Uh, anyways, option one budget is basically with the exception of, um. Giving. My full-time people at least a five hundred dollar annual increase. Um, there are no other, but that's giving me a decrease. So it balances out. But really, the only. The only increases in this are due to a dispatching contract. Um, our liability insurance. And our workers' comp insurance that went up. Just regular, you know, expected increases. Uh, again, what I believe the negative impacts with. That budget is going to be is.
One more question before you test out that.
Yes.
Line seven eleven.
Uh.
When I, I, I see, it's the time you receive a lot on budget.
Oh, oh, oh.
You know, employees continue to receive a twenty-five dollar stipend for then instead of the hourly wage. What does that mean?
So with the original proposed budget, part of the increases in there was to go to, and I don't know if you recall me saying this, is to go to a one wage for all of our personnel. One base wage. Right now, we have several different wages depending on what they're doing. Uh, if it's a paid on call, call that they're coming to a house fire, they make a certain wage. If they're doing a duty shift, twelve-hour shift, there's several different ways for that. Um, if they come in because they have to follow somebody up to sagging out or drop a truck off and then bring them back, that's called a, a work. Work duty, where, I'm sorry, work detail. We pay ten bucks an hour for that. When they come to trainings every week for the two and a half hours that they're here. Two hours that they're here for the trade and I call it two and a half getting, you know, back and forth and from home, um, they get a twenty-five dollar stipend. So the goal was to get rid of all that.
Single stipend, not pro.
Single stipend, twenty-five bucks for that training. So the goal with.
They're also paid.
They're also paid what?
They're also paid the runway.
No.
Training's unpaid.
The training is twenty-five dollars for each training. Trying to get rid of all that and go to a one wage. When you hire on, you're a fire EMT, fire engineer level one, your wage is twenty bucks an hour. That's what you make when you do anything on company time.
Will you ban that pay based on seniority? I mean, it's not just twenty-five, it's, it's from twenty-two to twenty-eight or something like that, right?
There'll be a scale, yes. But that was the intent of the original proposed budget was the, the increase in that would allow me to do that. That's one of the goals I've been trying to do for several years now because we have all these different categories of pay and. They are who they are. They hold the stuff that they hold. They all should be making the same wage whether they're coming here to. Follow somebody up to drop a truck off, come to a training or go into a house fire.
So this budget doesn't allow us to do that?
It does not. Again, this budget keeps everything that we're currently doing this budget year with the exception of. The swi- swapping of, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars from my salary to the seven other full-time people.
I have a question on that line as well. Um, because. I don't know if the board is aware, but you have to test for continuing education and, and certain credit time. Practical one lots of people in your life as well. So in one year, the, uh, the authority is providing that to their people. Or otherwise, like even if you work for a full-time at an ambulance company, you come here, so if you work at part-time, then you can get your credit. Where I believe, um, otherwise you would have to go and play a K for somewhere, so to be with CPR. Or you would have to maybe go online and you'd have to. So there's a certain amount of, of credit you have to get in both categories in order to secure life. So in one way, you're offering something to these people as well. Um. It, I'm just making a point. I said, I don't know if the rest of the board would hear that.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at my question before about do the department provide training or do there have been.
We absolutely do. No, no.
But other departments pay for training even for continuing education training.
Even for the minor weekly trainings that they have to keep up on, they, they. Some don't provide it. They have to go all the way to get there. And we also not only provide it, but give the necessary credits that count towards the license for the state. And we, we do that all in-house with our administrative staff.
But what I'm trying to get at is. Department X, uh, employee needs continuing education credit to maintain their, their life.
They have to either find a seminar to go to or they can go online and pay twenty-five bucks credit or.
Who pays?
They do. Well.
They pay for themselves or the department?
No, I, well, I.
That, that's the question.
Some of them do reimburse for that or pay for that. But there are some that have to do that on their own.
And we're, we're choosing to pay for it or don't?
We're too. Can you provide them?
We do.
They're trying to send somebody here or I believe others to take care and. Then I'll go think about that.
Yes.
Okay.
Because when someone has to renew, you have to actually say, yeah, I did all these things.
That's another benefit that we provide for employees.
Yes. So that's my looking at the, you need to be paying for what they're actually giving them, um, it's a, it's a benefit. At the same time.
Okay. Continue with your analysis of option one budget.
Um, so getting back to what I believe the negative impacts would be with this budget, uh, we're still going to struggle with, uh, open shifts. Um, may lose some full-time employees. Due to, well, there is a slight wage increase. Based on the swap I did with my salary, however, it's not much. Um. Uh. There has been discussion murmurs within the full-time people as they're looking to. At some point, unionize if they feel that they're not being representative, represented well enough. Current paid, paid on call, part-time employees will be more difficult to keep and recruitment will be more difficult. And we're still neglecting the capital fund.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um. And you, when you, why is a union or negative thing, um, because I'm unionizing and supporting each other and I mean, it wouldn't just be about. Wages, right? It would be about policies and things like that. I mean, why is the, why is it?
I'm not saying.
Negative, uh, I'm, I'm negative impact of this budget. So can you explain to me why a union would be negative?
Well. The board members are going to have to be involved with that in any negotiations. I can be present for that, but really that puts the. Tasks on board to do that. Um. I guess you have a point. I, I don't mean to call it a.
Because I noticed it was got removed on, uh, proposal three. And I'm just curious why it's negative at all because. It doesn't seem like it would be negative to actually help the policy and support it. So they're going to come up with ideas and they come to the board and make, and have discussions. I, so that, that was my only thing. I, I don't see a union necessarily for negative impact.
Um. I guess it, it, we'd have to see what the outcome would be once, once it was. I mean, normally. Um, uni- unions form due to, you feel, uh, wages is, I mean, it's usually the top, the top thing, wages and benefits that they feel it could get better wages and benefits. Not that they necessarily would, but again, it's just another layer within the department that would have to be dealt with.
Okay. What does option two look like, Chief?
So option two is basically still. Not giving, um, any, well, again, a small increase to the full-time employees. Um. It's taking away the. Still not adding any more overtime wages that was proposed in the original budget. Um, this would give a dollar increase. Um, for part-time, for, for the part-time positions. Um. The employees would get, we could be, you, we could do the one wage. Uh, thing that I'm trying to get to or, or the, you know, everybody that paid on call on the part-time. Um, but basically it doesn't allow the full-time people with any increases or better benefits or all that. We still keep the, uh, um, capital fund at the fifty thousand. Um, instead of the hundred that I'd like to see it at. Uh, so again, it's a, it's a little bit better than option one.
For, for, for clarity, seven oh eight, seven eight point five, those one dollar increase for the duty of medic and duty of station.
That would allow us to do the one wage, that influx of, of, of increase in ru- or money. That would allow us to, to do the one wage for everybody.
But these are new increases, not any increases that, that the board has voted on in the past.
Correct.
These, these are proposed new wages.
Yes.
Okay. So e- even if this budget went through, we would still, the board had to, had to vote on that.
We're, well, you vote on the budget, which would include that, so.
And we just do it automatically. Why have we voted on rates in the past at the board level? Because they were outside of the budget?
No, because they were always included in, within the budget. Therefore, when you approve the budget, you're approving the increase.
The last raise we had, I felt, was outside of the budget. It was just a separate, separate discussion we had. It would only end at budget time?
I've only done wage increases. Yeah, I've only done wage increases that were included in the budget, we've never had a special one outside of it.
So, thi- this would happen automatically at.
Approval.
At the, at, at start of this.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Um, we, we would love to take a five-minute recess. That's it in my view.
I just, I have to get a walk.
So we're taking.
Test.
We must be. That, that.
Are there any other questions on option two budget analysis? Sure we're good, not from here. Hearing none, if you want to through option three chiefs.
So. In a nutshell, option three is. The original of Y twenty-two, original proposed budget, helped the full-time position costs and. With only half of the original requested overtime costs. This gives the full-time, um, staff their annual wage increase. Um, it again gives only, um. Ten thousand, I'm sorry, twenty thousand dollars of overtime originally, instead of the. Fifty thousand, four or five thousand dollars originally requested. Um, this gives the dollar increase in order to fund the, the one wage plan. Um. There's not, oh, I'm sorry, it also does not include the, um. Full-time four oh one contribution, two percent increase that was originally proposed.
So the change over the budget, the original proposed budget for next year is not adding a full-time position.
Right.
And not increasing the four oh one day, the rest of these were in the budget.
And not, you know, we have the overtime. Originally, we had, uh. Fifteen thousand dollar increase for overtime for full-time and a. Twenty-five thousand dollar increase for part-time. And now we're only at a total between the two, uh. Um. Twenty thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm a bit confused about overtime.
Yes.
How do you? Control the overtime costs? In, in, in a budgetary way?
It's not easy, it happens, so.
You didn't fill a shift, you need to. You have another COVID going on.
I have to, I have to juggle between, do we fill a shift or do I utilize? A person that'll have to pay overtime to. Based on the budgeted amount that we had to work with with the current year, very conservative throughout most of the year. Um, some of it in the beginning of the year was actually reimbursed by COVID. Um, around six thousand dollars that we were reimbursed, once the COVID grant closed down, we're no longer able to utilize. That, COVID kind of started to pan down a little, um, still. Throughout the year, I'm very conservative and I have to make that call, it's usually last minute. Um, can usually use an overtime for, let's say, we don't have any. Uh, personnel at one of the stations, we only have two people that we could get. Um, to fill a schedule that we're still short to. Um, at that point, that's kind of a death con level move up, if you will, because I want to get at least one person. At the station, um, to get out the door, so I would approve overtime at that, um. Again, it's, it, it's, it's juggling between, should I, should I try to go through this? Right now in the beginning of the year or try to spread it out, um, luckily, I was very conservative. Throughout most of the year and only giving out a little bit of it because we got hit in April. Before we got hit, but then I had no choice but to. Use it at that time where there were some nights we wouldn't have first time at either one station.
So this, this really comes down to. A commitment to try to stay within these, but at, as a, the, the pain point is. You've got to decide in July whether to use up overtime to cover duty shifts. Or leave the station empty, that's, that's the pain point that this causes if we don't have it in our budget.
Yes, and the request for more money into that was to more easily decide. If we have these open shifts, yes, fill them, that's more important in my opinion than leaving. The station without the private crew. But when you're tasked with only. The amount that we had for this year, looking at. What the trend has been and what to be expected, started open shifts. It, it's really hard to try to decide for, uh, what point do you throw, throw it all in and now you don't have anything for, you know, when April hit. Um, then I'm coming back to you guys going, yeah, I need another fifty thousand dollars alone. Um. So again, uh, the, the original request for the amount that was requested was so that we wouldn't have to make. Those decisions and have the situation. Okay.
And then you go back to you the two on this one.
Yeah, uh, obviously the full-time employees still wouldn't get any kind of, uh, increase in the country, four oh one contribution to their retirement and, um. Uh. We're still, you know, having, in my opinion, having that, hiring an open position takes up, you know, twenty-six hundred hours a year of. Full-time coverage, that's, that's there, it's somewhat guaranteed, if you will, and it just helps, helps fill these, these open shifts, so. Um, again, the other negative impact that it ran here, because of that, because we're not, uh. Requesting the initial amount of overtime that I like to have, that we still probably struggle with filling open shifts.
So does, does adding up another full-time person to decrease the cost of paying the part-time people? Is it really the zero sum game?
So when you just, when you formulate out a full-time, but say we start a full-time person at fifty thousand dollars a year. But, um, wage-wise for shift coverage, it's actually more efficient because, uh. The way the full-time person's schedule is laid out in the twenty-four hour increments that they have. Take all that into consideration, what you're paying that full-time person per hour is actually less. It comes out like fifty thousand dollars, I think may come out to seventeen eighty or something like that an hour, it might be a little. So, as opposed to if that full-time person is a paramedic. He's now based on his, the formulation of his wage per hour, his base wage, you know, less than eighteen dollars an hour. As opposed to if I was having to fill that twenty-six hundred dollars a year with a. Part-time medic that I'm paying right now, twenty dollars an hour, it's a cost savings.
So does that show up in here?
Well, it does, but it's.
Full-time position, other costs are going up.
Other costs are going down.
They're going up by removing the full-time position.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
He, he had the full-time position in the original proposed budget. In option three, he'd remove the full-time position, therefore, I'd expect those other costs to go up.
Well, the big, the, the big factor line item would be the, uh. Duty shift medic. The costs go up.
Yeah, one of them. The sixty could be.
Right, that, that's, that's really what, what that affects. Now, there are also other considerations with full-time, we do get the two dollar basically offset. Um. Savings, but then, you know, we have the, the healthcare that we provide for the full-time. Um, that depending on, you know. Who they have under that, if it's just themselves, then it probably isn't that much more of an expense, but if they have, you know, family. Um, those, those costs, you know, that affects that, so. Um, at the end, it's. It, it's not a lot of extra money to hire a full-time person as opposed to paying a part-time person. The part-time wage that we have.
I, I, if I'm. I think part of the difference in a full-time and a part-time, what I'm talking about. Is you no longer have to worry about filling shifts, you have a guarantee.
Well, that's the point. And there's also pluses to having, having a, a full-time personnel department, they're, they're more readily there, they're, you know. Most of our full-time people, even the ones that are officers, I look at as a senior type person and they. Um, teach and kind of oversee the stations more consistently, um, they're, uh. Our sergeant, Don Dewey, uh, whenever he's on a shift, he. Puts out a message to anybody that's available, might be available that day, come up here, I'm really training on, on fire truck, you guys can learn. I mean, so there, there's also those types of, uh, buses to having a full-time person because they're more involved with the department. Yes, sir.
I mean, full-time people losing out for.
We, including myself, we have eight.
Outside of management, can. Four.
So I guess, I guess I have to ask one question, I'm just confused. From what we're setting up to do today. Um, all three of these budgets, so I'm clear, budget one. Is an increase per township of six thousand forty-one dollars. Budget two is an increase of thirty thousand. Budget three is an increase of seventy-two thousand. Per township, correct. The original budget that was offered was an increase of a hundred and two thousand, correct. Rose Township at their last meeting approved last year's budget, which isn't any of these three. And based on the numbers that treasurer and who said today. They have a total of six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Between. Their surplus and what, and their collection. That gives them a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar deficit. He said the other night they had a three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I've got eighty-four thousand dollars right now.
I know, I added your eighty-four to the five, sixty-eight, that gives six fifty-two.
Yeah.
Six fifty-two for eight eighteen is a hundred and sixty-six. The answer, I mean, it's, we're down to money, it's a question of what we can afford to pay and you're gonna have to let us know. But we're gonna, that's what we're here for, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. We took money from the dinner from right here, knowing what this, I mean, it was something the board discussed and we approved, so. So why didn't you put it on the ballot in November? Why didn't you take care of that instead of just letting it crash?
I mean, how many collects three point eight five from this? So we know what we have when we move the budget, all I'm saying today, I'm not trying to attack, all I'm saying is you need to let us know.
But we have a, we have a new, our, our, um, new. Millage is coming up next year, so we did not expect, I expected to be a deficit, I did not expect. Us to be running up hundred, hundred, ten thousand dollar a year increases, but we talked about that and said we were gonna ride out this. And we'd cover anything, any shortfalls from the general cost.
Okay, I, I apologize if you think I was attacking, and what I was saying was I was asking you. What number are we, what, what is the number you're able to do so we know how to.
Well, why don't we pick a, could be an emotional, it's personal to us because I think that's the, the way to go.
So I think my motion. If I may. To. Reimprove the original, this will be your twenty twenty-two original proposed budget. For submission, for submission to the township board for proof.
I support.
The nine hundred and twenty thousand.
I, I know.
I want, I want.
I have a suggestion.
I would, I would like, so.
Having made the motion, I'm a loud speaker. Yeah. Um. I, I wanna test the waters, I mean, I wanna do exactly what you just said, Dan, I wanna see.
All right, yeah.
We, we've heard, we've heard a lot of, a lot of, uh, pain points that exist in these various budgets. And I'm curious, given, given the great information that we got today and the results that we got today. If they, if the board would be in favor of representing this back to the council.
Anyone else have any comments or discussion?
I'm more presentable to the board.
I don't think we would get my board's part.
I have, I can give you my ideas, what I would like.
Well, let's, we have a monster on the table.
I'm sorry.
Good one, David. The other. Well, just for clarification, I. Just, uh, just for clarification. The other, well, just for clarification, I, just, just for clarification, that based on the numbers that Paul gave, that is a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar deficit. The question that I was raising earlier was what can their budget, they, only they know what their budget can handle. It's foolish for us to make a motion that's something that they can't handle, they need.
Thank you. And as far as the shortfall, also, I mean, you, we couldn't predict it five years ago when we renewed this, put this in front of the people that this budget would double in that amount of time because I don't, historically, I don't believe that's ever happened. So I'm not just saying because there was a comment, why, why did we allow a shortfall? Well, we couldn't predict that when we do that. When we, when we, you create a military people, you face them, what you think it's going to come in the future, and it's hard to predict a budget almost doubling in five years. And, and the other thing is that we had two villages there. The second one barely passed with fifty percent. The, the first one, the one point five, almost passed with about sixty percent. The second, um, village passed with about fifty-two percent. I don't think that we would have been able to, and I thought that at the time, it certainly seemed adequate. When the things come up and we're gonna be short, and we, when we talked about at the board, I think it's in June, like, he mentioned, we're gonna be short this. Uh, what do you wanna do? And we, and we informally, we did not make a motion on this, but we informally talked, and so, well, we'll just cut the shortfall for the one year. Because it's gonna be, this is the one year, because in the year, it's gonna end six thirty twenty-two, it'll be seven one twenty-two to there's a six thirty twenty-three, and then we'll have our, we will have, I'm thinking we're gonna have a new village in August, I'm going to at this point.
I believe that we thoroughly discussed for years and years what, what kind of increases we were gonna get as a department. Um, I don't think it's any surprise or shouldn't have been a surprise to anybody. It should have been thought out and planned for, Holly Township planned for it, and, and we did a sad, like, you know, I'd suggested you guys do several times, and we do our minimal increases to allow for the growth and, and the proper running of the department. So we're, we're, we're cutting top-notch department because Rose Township is having financial issues. I don't think that's the right thing to do. You, you guys should take care of your financial issues and we should be dealing with the fire department and how we want this to go. And we committed years ago to, to the, these things happening.
I agree with Paul, though, I, I believe that she did say that this would be the last increase as of last year, and I think we'll see a discussion during the audit, why the increases occur. But let's, let's stick to what's on the table here.
That was on the table.
Yeah, exactly. Before you were on the board, roughly four years ago, for at least a good year, uh, when we were looking at, um, especially when we started getting into taxi authority stuff, but you know, before that, I distinctly know that I continued for many meetings to bring you guys information on how I thought this department was gonna go with, with the needs in the future. I brought you information on what the current tax, taxing rate was for each of your villages. I gave you tables specifically Rose Township, that I said, this is what I see as where you should have your millage at now and in the future, I think for a minute of years. So to say that you were totally sidelined by this, and I'm sorry, but that's not a true statement. I have been coming to you guys for four years now, explaining the need for this, where I see the money that needs to be generated for the revenue, even giving you examples based on your own millage rate, what, what I believe it should be.
So you're saying that five years ago when we renewed our millage, you were, you were in the know of knowing that our, that we would be increasing this budget by fifty percent?
I said more than one time to this board and to other Rose Township members that reviewing that knowledge for the same that it was five years ago, wasn't that cut?
I wasn't on the board then.
No, I, I realize that.
Well, I think that the best thing to do is instead of sitting here blaming each other, I think we solve this and, and and come to a conclusion here.
So what's, what's your, what's your, what's your number, though?
Um, no, I know, it's all this is.
All right, well.
I didn't, wait, you, you afford to.
I said we need to know what the numbers, but it's right over there. You gotta push. Yeah, we got.
We're still talking about that motion, and we could easily amend that motion.
All right, okay.
If you chose to go there.
All right, well, my, my feeling is, is I would like to pay budget to, and amend it to pay a dollar an hour to all non-management full-time people. So if he said, Chief said that was for people, I would give them a dollar an hour, plus all the other items in budget two. That would bring us up to about fifty-two thousand dollars, approximately between fifty and sixty thousand dollars.
An increase.
An increase.
And why don't the other ones get one?
Right.
So, so what, 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 you, you, you are basically putting motion on the floor to amend your, amend my motion.
And your motion.
To, to, you're pretty much on the floor to amend my motion to, instead of using the proposed budget, to use budget option two with a change. I'm, I'm trying to restate what he said.
But that's not amending the motion that you did.
Sure you can.
You're just changing the motion. Now you're trying to change it.
That's called amending a motion, that you're striking out everything and you're replacing with something else, that's the motion.
With the motions on the floor that we need to vote on, I call for a vote on the motion.
Okay, you do, you would need to get a vote, focus vote to have a vote on the motion.
No, two-thirds.
Right, for a motion. So.
Three, so three to two.
So why can't you just vote and get that motion?
You have to get it off the, right, like, why are we playing games? You had a motion, you made a motion, and I supported it. We got a discussion, now we need to vote on it, so I'm calling for a vote.
Point of order.
That's.
We can make amendments to motions sitting on the floor. Paul has proposed making a amendment which strikes the original motion and instead puts in the fiscal year twenty-two option with one change to a wage increase. I don't have the details on it. That would be an allowed amendment if you get support.
Paul convoluted it, I don't, I don't agree with that.
That budget two would cause one way out.
So Paul, can you give me the detail, um, where you want to make the change?
Uh, it says five hundred annual wage increase for full-time, and I would give the non-management full-time people, which Chief said is four, I would give them a dollar increase. The, we, we made a commitment to increase all the paid-up call people to get them up to twenty-one dollars an hour.
What line number?
Line seven, first of all, seven hundred point five, where it's presently reading five hundred dollar annual increase for full-time employees known in the position. I would say a dollar an hour increase for non-management employees. I see this as four people right now.
Okay.
So you wanna dissect the board?
We, we have, we, we have a, a motion to amend the motion. Is there support?
I don't understand the motion, please explain it better. All right, so we, we would, we would adopt. You might lie there where we're taking this money from or to. All right, so at seven hundred point five, this is five hundred annual. We're talking about option two. Option two. Five hundred, all right, look at seven hundred point five, it now reads five hundred dollar annual wage increase for four, full-time employees, and I would replace that with a dollar an hour raise like the rest of them for full-time employees not considered managed. So that would be four of the people, that would be fifty-two hundred thousand per employee. Approximately twenty thousand, it'd be a little bit more, it'd bring up our increase to about fifty thousand.
So out of the seven full-time employees I have, four of them are going to get raises and the other three.
The, the non-management ones, he said.
Yeah, why would you do that?
That's my motion. So that gives us about a fifty thousand dollar decrease that we had.
I have to figure out what that is. I'm not gonna ask you to repeat that.
All right, cool.
Is, is there support? Hearing none, we go back to the original motion, which is to approve the original proposed budget for sending the vouchers. Is there any further discussion there?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna, how do we cut this budget?
It's not a cut, this is the original, voted to do the original twenty-two budget at the Holly Township.
Okay, no, no conversation with it.
Um, let's see.
You just, you just run that motion if you need.
We're, we're back to it because the amendment didn't get support.
Again, I mean, I don't think it's an idea, or don't we voted that down? So I mean, we happen to rely first to make budgets and move forward, so that's my comment.
Did you actually vote it down?
We didn't vote it down, we, we issued a, we had an amendment based on the prior year. Well, you're right, motion to the, yeah, well, technically a motion failed when it's not forwarded, yes.
It basically doesn't exist if it's not supported, so you didn't, you didn't vote that down, you voted for a motion for a reduced amount.
Right. But it, but the motion didn't care, so. If a motion doesn't get supported, it's a.
So what, what, what I'm trying to do by putting motion up is get a better understanding from Rose Township is do where the, where the number lies.
I, I offered it fifty.
Be kind of clear with the non-management.
Well, I said it was, I offered half, and, um, you know, that's a start.
Um, we could, I, I don't necessarily want a vote that ends up three-two, and then we're done. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to, how to, um, really understand where the number lies that we're trying to get to, I don't.
Okay, let's look at option three then, all right, I'll make a motion to look at option three. Without the additional cost for training, what is that, the difference if there was a threat to subtract that increase?
Without the additional cost of.
The training, um.
Or in training wages?
Well, originally we can get twenty-five dollars an hour instead of training, uh, we wanted, so what was the difference in keep, keeping that there? On that option three.
So instead of, so you wanna keep them at a stipend? For twenty-five dollars for training?
Correct.
So it would go back down to, um.
It's just ten thousand.
It's a ten thousand dollar.
So then be that option two. Let me take this in front of me. Action three is seventy-two, so I would make a motion to approve action three with the, uh, that the increase for the, that's minus seven eleven.
So basically, we take option three but deduct ten thousand dollars.
So sixty-two thousand zero nine six would be the amount I would support and with that budget.
We'll get two motions on the floor.
We don't have two motions on the floor, it is attempting to amend the motion, how amendments work.
It's not here, it is not.
I choose to disagree.
Wow.
You may at any point call for a point of order and have the board override.
Well, that's almost useless at this point, but, you know.
I think that was.
Yeah, and you guys just, right, because I can tell you, you're wrong, this is not how this stuff works.
So, I'm sorry, Diane, so just, so I have the numbers, right? So you're, overall, you're saying option three is eight hundred and ninety thousand nine six, you wanna take out the training, the increase in the training line item?
Yes.
Which is ten thousand, so it was basically five thousand dollars per community, which would bring the total per community from eight hundred and ninety thousand nine six dollars to eight hundred and fifty-five thousand nine six dollars.
All right, hold on.
You're taking it back to the twenty thousand?
Option three is a, is, is an increase of seventy-two thousand dollars.
Per township.
Per township.
Correct.
Okay.
If we take out ten thousand dollars out of that one line, divide that by two, that's five thousand per community. So if you wanna look at what the increase amount would be, it'd be seventy-two thousand minus five thousand. Or if you wanna do the total.
I got that.
Okay.
George?
So, I'm really trying to wrap my written comments, and, and I apologize, my voice is, I think I explained it before. It's not, it's not emotional, it's, it's my condition, so. Rose Township approved eight hundred and ten thousand last year's budget. Why can't we freeze that budget and go forward through the next year? Is there something that doesn't allow that to work and therefore we don't have to lay off any of our people? If, hear me out, if Rose Township has additional money past the eight eighteen that they approved, which I tried to ask Mr. Gamp to what was targeted and where we're working at. I just don't understand, it seems to me we're making this a lot more complicated. They already threw the eighteen at last year's budget, you freeze the budget and you go forward.
But there was grant money, there was grant money that was coming in last year, it wouldn't be that.
The recent money was lost. Twenty, almost thirty thousand dollars for the sacred grant, improve the dispatch agreement for an additional seventy-four hundred. I've got about five thousand dollars in pass with the liability workers' comp insurance, hence option one. Basically took into consideration all those and nothing else.
So George, you're suggesting just, you know, let Rose, let Rose to approve?
Wait, so.
That's one question.
I'm.
Okay.
Go ahead. Let me ask this question. So we, we know Rose approved eight eighteen, that's last year's budget frozen. You just told me that in order to freeze last year's budget.
It has to be eight twenty-four.
It has to come up with twenty-three, you said for grants, correct?
It's eight, it's right here.
I know, I'm just trying to go through the numbers. So you have twenty-three, you had seven, seventy-five hundred, right? I'm asking, yes, and then five thousand.
Uh, roughly, yes.
Okay, so that was thirty-five thousand, you say roughly, so if we went forty thousand, you could stay with the same budget we had last year, each township has a twenty thousand dollar increase. Does that work for Rose Township? It's above your eight eighteen, it's an additional twenty, but it keeps everybody whole and stagnant, it's a spread year while Rose Township deals with their village and stuff.
But I support an additional twenty thousand dollars, we, that's what I, but our board supported an additional twenty thousand dollars above the eight eighteen.
Yeah, pretty much. Your board approved to freeze.
I believe our board would, yes. I can support that myself.
Your board approved the issue's budget, but there's a shortfall because of these funds, which is an under twenty. We avoid layoffs.
No, you don't.
No.
This is number one, that's the number one budget, option one. This is, this is what's gonna happen with option one, and these are the negative impacts. Now we're going backwards.
Option one.
It has to be eight, can't be eight, eight eighteen, it has to be eight twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay, so here it is, so, so that's option number one. This is option number one, this is all the discussion.
But option one calls for laying off an employee.
And that's what's gonna happen.
It doesn't call, it says that I have to move money out of the capital fund so we would not have to lay off anyone.
Yes, none of our laying of the off, right? I mean, these three options.
The only way that, the only way that we would end up laying some of the off is if we approve the budget like Rose Township did at the current rate for next year. Because I have operation costs that are fixed, that have to get paid. Therefore, that would be coming out of personnel costs, I have to find that money somewhere. Either it comes out of personnel costs or it comes out of our capital replacements, which we.
But that's what I was asking you. If you look at the twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. at 818,000. In order to freeze that budget, I understand there are things that went up. And what I was asking you was what was that increase?
And I just told you. It was requiring any personnel costs. It was roughly $40,000.
Okay.
That's just to be able to pay fixed operating costs.
Okay, so that's, that's.
I'm going to call a point of order. There was a motion on the floor, Peter, you made a motion.
Yes.
I supported it.
Yes, you did.
I want, I want to vote on it. This is ridiculous, so what we're putting ourselves through. There's only one motion on the table, there's discussion. If you amend the motion slightly is what you do, not, not. Well, all right, never mind, anyway.
I'm trying to run the meeting and run the board. Amendments are allowed. Amendments can include a strike, you can tie language, they rip a motion. And replacing it with another. If we choose to do that, we can do that.
But it's, look at what's happening.
Something else we can do, something else, we're having the best discussion that we've ever had about the budget. That's happened in the meeting.
No, we're just tearing it apart. We're not moving forward.
We're having a fantastic discussion about the budget and the needs of this community. I move to, uh, table the current motion.
She called the question, she called the question. Symbol, symbol.
She calls the question.
She called the question.
We take a roll call. It requires a two-thirds majority, which is four out of five.
For the original 2022.
Yes.
Proposed to.
This is, this is voting on whether we're going to vote on it. This is not voting on the motion.
Oh, whether we're going to vote? Okay, gotcha.
Calling the question means that you're asking for a ride the chairman who is running the meeting and having immediate vote.
Where do you, where do you, where do you get this from? What book are you from?
Okay.
You're out of order, sir. Do you want to go forward with your call for last question?
Yes.
Okay. It's not, it's not discussable, it's not, a second is not needed. It requires a two-thirds majority.
Do I need a second?
You don't need a second.
Well, now, I'll be real quick.
We're voting as to whether or not we're going to vote on the motion. You're not voting on the motion. That's what the call is.
And the motion is to.
She called for the vote.
She's calling for the vote. Do you want to have a vote on that motion?
I got, I got that, but, okay.
And the motion is.
I got to staying where we're at.
Straight up, point blank.
But the, the motion is support the original budget beyond that.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Ready?
Go.
Stop it.
Uh, no.
Winchester.
Yes.
Ganka.
No.
Coles.
Yes.
Translator.
Yes.
Okay, it does not mean the two-thirds requirement. Uh, it doesn't call for the question.
It's majority, where do you?
It is not a majority. Last question is run on the floor, not on the two-thirds. I would like to make a motion to table this motion. By table, I mean means to set aside. And we're going to take up other business. Is there, is there a support for that?
So you're going to table it, oh yeah, we could do that. Support.
Do a second.
Yeah, you can, you can do that.
Is there any discussion about table? Could you take a roll call back?
Stoffer?
Yes.
Translator?
Yes.
Coles?
Sure.
Let me out?
Yeah, positive.
Ganka?
Yes.
Winchester?
No.
Okay, then motion is set aside. It can be untabled by, by a vote of the board. Are there any other motion? Would anyone like to make a proposal about a budget submission to the vouchers?
I'll break this, I'll go back to my original question. As I see. We have an approval by Rose Township for 818,000, which is last year's budget. In order to continue on that path, it requires an additional $40,000, which goes at 850,000. At that point, we need Rose Township to be able to tell us what they feel they can do. Can they get to that point? Can they agree on that point? Those are questions that we can't ask and I'm not attacking.
I feel our board would support that.
George?
It's like, you know, and without, you know, kings that go behind closed doors or things like that, uh, I feel our board would support that.
I mean, it comes down to.
I can't guarantee it, but I feel they would.
I'm just saying it comes down to the treasury and the supervisor. Can you go and tell us what they can do?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would recommend to our board to support that. I, I mean, the, like.
What, what, what exactly is the option that you're talking about, George? Are you talking about option one, straight up? Option two, straight up?
It's not necessarily one of those options. It's just a bet. It's a dollar amount.
We have to have a budget that goes with that.
Well, at that point, that's why I asked the chief if he went with last year's budget, exactly the way it was written. Hang on. In order to do that, somewhere he has to plug in those three numbers that he just told us about to, to update them.
I have to go back and review a budget. That's not included in any of these.
I think that's a good start, George, honestly, because, but I really think we do have to choose one of these in order to move forward. Uh, and maybe make some changes to them if, if necessary, but I like where you're going and I appreciate that. But, uh, I think that to move forward, we really need to work with one of these three budgets and see what we can subtract or add to and go forward with them. So I need to present this to the board. Um, and I mean, you guys need to present it to your board and then once we both agree, we, we need to put it into our own budgets, which have timelines as well.
Well, I mean, I think it's safe to say our, our board will approve anything.
Okay.
Because they've already approved the original budget.
All right.
So whatever number Rose Township comes up with. And that's what I was trying to get as an answer. Here's what we have.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that. I, I believe our board would support that.
And that money toward the chief and say, there's, there's your money for your.
So your board, you're saying your board would support an additional $40,000 from the current budget?
It's 40,000, yeah.
Is that what, okay.
I would, I believe they will.
So that's close.
But I can't speak for them all, but yeah, I believe, I probably could get them to do that.
So it's actually between option two and three. Money, monetarily speaking.
And I would suggest that's a case that the chief gets his salary back.
So.
I would add a motion to take, not through option two, with rehearsal of the chief's um, deduction from the salary and leaving the 500 increase for the seven. Or so pull them. With any.
If you're supporting option two, those are perfect.
Could you say again, please?
I, I, I'm not making a motion.
Oh, you're not, okay.
I'm, I'm suggesting that someone make a motion that supports option two but reverses line 700.
Okay.
And gives that back to the chief.
All right.
And leave line 700.5. Which will increase
Oh.
the total by 35. Yes.
So you're saying the only changes are having the chief not take a reduction. What if we took out the, um, well, how many 20 is that one? 30. All right. Gotcha.
Would you like to make a motion now?
Sure. I'll, I'll move to support the option two budget. Um, changing the cost code minus 700 of chief is, um, taking a wage reduction of 3,500. And not having to take that reduction.
Your support?
Sir.
Thank you, George. Is there any discussion?
I have just, you're leaving line 700.5 in?
Correct.
Yes, or originally in his option two budget spreadsheet, he, the chief, the chief has taken a $3,500 wage reduction. We're going to re.
For a second.
Remove that and have him, um, not take the reduction.
So in essence, we're approving option two.
Option two, line 700. Option two plus 1750 per community, it comes up to 849167, total of 848176. Sorry, 849176 from the 848176.
Can you give that number in the motion that?
Uh, 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 what would it be?
It would be each, each township's contribution would be 849176. And I can make the adjustments to the cells.
So, so Pat, what we're doing is minus 700 on its spreadsheet.
It's 1750.
The, the, the chief will not be taking a $3,500 reduction. Uh, would you like me to repeat it?
No, 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 I was, I was just confused about 700.5, but that's who you say as it is.
Could you, could you repeat the motion then, please?
As soon.
Hold on, hold on one second, hold on one second. We gotta get the number right.
849.
I'm sorry, 849926.
You're right.
Okay. 849926.
You can forget from that.
But 700.5 is where you standard with it.
That's funded by the state. It's option two. It's option two minus line 700.
That.
That's it.
That. Right, that was the motion.
She made the motion, I second.
Is there any further?
I just want to bring to the attention of the negative impacts that we already discussed with this option two budget. And I think it's in state.
I don't necessarily agree with dollars or dollars. We have to respect those.
If they're.
I, I don't disagree with you, but this is where we're at. And so can you fix their knowledge, that's what we're at. This is at least the levels just to go forward.
Then I don't want to pick option three then. I move to approve, uh, option three.
Do we have a motion to amend? Do you have to amend?
I, 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 uh, would like to amend that motion to, uh, approve, uh, the option three.
So to strike all language?
Strike all language.
Prove that.
Yes.
Is there a second for that motion?
It needs to come from Rose Township, they have to be able to know whether they, they.
Hearing none. The motion still sits on the table. Any further discussion on approving option two with the one change to the line 700? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a roll call.
Stoffer, or translator, translator.
Yes.
Coles?
Yes.
Ganka?
Yes.
Winchester?
No.
Stoffer?
Yes.
All right, so it would be the board's wishes for me to go with just the option two or make sure all the numbers line up with the rate cost codes. Figure some more.
Yep, please. Very well, thank you. The point of clarification, uh, conversation I had is the board need, the township boards need to approve the budgets before our next meeting? Or only before June 30th? Honor for June 30th?
My answer to that is I'll be calling a special meeting. I have one, wait. Okay, because we run out of time.
I'll be calling a special meeting and I'll probably have to, like, two special meetings, but yeah. Special meeting for this, I'll be going forward.
Answer your question is knowing on the F.
All right, I'm just, I'm just.
I think it's a smart thing to do.
Absolutely.
Good, appreciate it.
I have a little bit of a question for a minute. This is to, it wasn't stated, I don't believe, but this is to send it to the township for.
Yep, you're correct, you are correct.
And that's all we can do.
Is that my, can I?
Yeah, please, that, that's.
That was.
And that, that was clear to everyone, that's what we were.
Well, let me, but can I go ahead and amend that? This would be at the same or no?
I just don't want to.
It's a carry.
The motion is already, it's already carried. You can go back and, and you can, I forgot what it's called. There's a way to do it, I don't know if we support it. If we're all in agreement that we can't approve the budget.
I, I just, how about if I make a motion to make sure that the word, word is at that, that motion?
Go for it.
No?
I'll go for it.
I'll make a motion to make sure that we bring to the approved motion, um, this finalized approved motion for option two, that the motion is to be sent to the two townships, Holly and Rose for approval.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Translator?
Yes.
Coles?
Yes.
Ganka?
Yes.
Winchester?
No.
Stoffer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just wanted to be.
Yeah, thanks for checking that.
Having concluded that portion of our business and the reason for this meeting, we will move on to public comments. Are there any public comments?
Yes, I will. I'll give you mine. I happen to be the one to make a vote in, in Rose Township. Do not fully agree. I want to point out that, just more to considerate, to the other stakeholders that are not here, the taxpayers. We always question, and other members of our board advise question, multi-increase in full year. And we've had enough of this, so I'm afraid to question. It just did not come out of the clear blue top. Looking at your budget, this grant and safer grant, money, money from the Godfather gets cut off all the time. You should never enter those funny money into your budget because they get cut off. And that's what's happened. You had the safer grant, grant, $165,000, the two items there, freedom, and the long gone. So in the future, so go for this funny money. Because I've seen it before in a lot of other businesses. But it builds up your staff and when the money ain't there, you gotta keep it. I'm sorry, that's what the approval builders are. So in the future, the board, you're probably doing the right thing in your own mind, but you're not representing the taxpayers. I myself and our board, we're trying our best to represent our taxpayers. They're, they're going to be told if this thing keeps going on, there's another four, three, two, three times. But thank you for your effort. We thoroughly discussed the, discussed the program. Can you, can you restate it? A equitable conclusion. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Noble. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Chair. If you would, please announce for those on Zoom meeting. If they want to make any comments, put on the reaction, raise their hand, and I can forward them to you.
There's a couple of hands up.
There are some hands up. If anyone's on the Zoom meeting and wants to make a public comment, you can raise your hand. Um, or at this point, I'm going to go with the, with Mr. Coop.
Mr. Jett.
Or you can, that Karen needs to leave.
I don't wanna leave. I have to cancel him now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you wanted to leave.
Well. Go ahead. I'm fine.
You're, you're perfectly fine too, to leave at this point. We'll still have four of them, and we decided that matter of hand, so I'm okay with that. Mr. Mr. Coop?
Yeah, I'd just like to offer an alternate, uh, comment. And I'll take up a lot of time. Karen and I one of, two other firefighters. The only ones who were left in two thousand, are left from the department in two thousand. That's where all this started. And it started because an organization called HBA went out and did volunteer fire, uh, ambulance service, which provided basically basic service in advanced life. So, we tried to win it for about two years. And it didn't work. We, the scheduling and the resources we could provide. So in two thousand, both Holly and Rose Township as well, the manliness of the car. Sucked it up and made a decision to provide ambulance service with the idea that we would get to advanced lives. In between that, we tried having, relying on private ambulance services. And they're way down to an hour. And we've pretty much were forced into this because so many of the, uh, communities in open cover were going to loan ambulance services. So eventually, all the private services pulled out of the air. We didn't have anything. So, we went providing the service that took us four years, resulted in adding power, one of the communities pulled out. And that added to our costs. We would not have had any ambulance service. We, J- Jancy County's got a better deal because, because they don't have any big communities that can afford a lot of these. Uh, so, and we knew at the time, seventy percent of our run, from running people back to ambulance, knew it was gonna cost most of it each year. And we knew that when we come, uh, over time, increases in population and stuff. That this was gonna be an expensive process. And if we can't resolve this in a long, long, long time. We're gonna be back to where we were back in two thousand, relying on the, on the fire services. The village is at, Rose Township right now, which is two percent. Your original village, well, the first one in two thousand, I think that was a ten-year village. Uh, in two thousand and ten, that became a renewal, and then had a new one just for ambulance service. Two thousand and fifteen was renewed for both. And unless you do something, if you pass renewals, you're gonna be having this conversation, uh, next year and the year after that. Gonna have to increase that village. I don't care if you do it divided, you're buying a lot, but you're gonna need when you get close to three mils to afford this service. And you just can't hide behind it, uh, because, I don't know, that's, you, I don't know if you're really getting value for your money now because this is what happens if you're not collecting enough money. This department is very frugal. I was involved for ten years. They're very good. They manage it in line. And I think since two thousand and five, we've gotten over three million dollars in grants. Not, some of them, most of them didn't include, uh, south positions. They were, you know, for equipment and stuff like that. So they've done a good job. And if you want decent, good service, you gotta pay for it. And the officials have to stand up and sell that to their community. It's not even paying for it. Uh, fifteen dollars an hour is the new minimum, or minimum wage. It's mostly states are pushing fifteen dollars now. And it goes from there. So, I know it's difficult to do, and you don't, nobody likes to increase taxes, but that's what we did in Rose Township. We kept renewing them, and here we are. Nobody's wrong. Nobody did a bad thing. They just, you know. Come, come time to pay the biker, and I think this is the time to do it. So, um, the other thing I'd like to say too, uh, that someone made a comment about, about you, whether they're, uh, creating a problem for it. I've negotiated seven or eight new contracts. I was a new official all the time. I was an annual official too. But my only concerns is when you have employees, through their chief or someone, come to you as a board to put out an agenda to talk about things, uh, like a benefit or something. And all you do is you vote it down, straight out, without even taking it home and talking up, you know? That is not good, you know? You don't give your employees any faith that you're concerned about what the future of this department. So the next time they come to you with, uh, also whether it's a benefit or something like that. Don't just reject it out of hand. Show them that at least you can accept that they've got a concern and want their rest. Uh, you know, Jeremy talked about, uh, another layer. What it does, it presents an adversarial atmosphere between the public. I don't think I see a lot of that overall now. But if you keep taking requests for employees, uh, taking concerns about a concern. That'll happen.
Thank you. I would like to remind the public, uh, I'm gonna start exhibiting in three minutes. Um, do we have public comments? Should I go to Gary McDonald? I don't know how long they've been up there. We got one here as well. Gary McDonald has had his hand up. Gary?
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, I'm Gary McDonald, uh, resident of Rose Township. First off, I would like to thank Fire Chief Lintz. I think he did a great job of explaining uh, the issues with um, his employees, uh, retention and recruitment, and, and the need for, for what he passed on. I think he did a really great job today doing that. Uh, with that being said, all across this country, many, if not most, paid-on-call and/or volunteer departments have the exact same issue with staffing. The requirements are exactly the same as they are for career firefighters. They have to go through the same training, the yearly trainings, everything has to be the same. They're held to the exact same standard. And that's not gonna go away. To that point, running an ALS department, transporting, and, uh, having paramedics on, that's a whole nother large book of training people. And I think it comes down to the fact if Rose Township and Holly Township want to continue that service of the fire department transporting. To do that, that budget is going to come up every year with, with needing to be increased to cover that. Um, that being said as well, I think salaries are pretty fair, from what I'm seeing. And you don't get into this job trying to get rich or make a lot of money out of it. Many career firefighters work second or third jobs just to make ends meet. They do it because their heart's in it. They want to help the community. Same thing with military. You join the military to make money. You're in it for the wrong reason. That, uh, obviously, that's not going to happen. So keep that in mind. Um, as far as pulling in people that just wanna do paid-on-call, uh, that's a tough nut to crack. I, you know, either their heart's in it or it's not. And really, you could pay them fifty dollars an hour, but if you're doing that, you're gonna have them there for the wrong reason. Honestly, that, I mean, that's my personal opinion. So, that's all I have for today. Again, thank you, Chief, for explaining all that for us today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
Hey. Uh, we've seen the example today that Diane runs into, and Rose wants what to do, telling Dan for what to do, telling you, generally. So this is, Rose Township, uh, is the puppeteer here. Then at the last meeting, the people weren't recognized that were on the phone, that weren't in the Zoom. There were many people who were ready to, uh, voice their opinions, but you skip over mute button. That's her, her way. So, uh, the time of the meeting here until the day is not conducive to public comment. Uh, the whole problem here actually stems from Danca and his lack of a tax increment and lack of his township budget. This could have all been spared if the taxes had been raised in, uh, Rose Township. Now, you've never found anybody that's more decisive about, uh, not having taxing, which I've never heard of, for tax increase. But this one is justified. It all comes on his shoulders. Then, uh, the way the composition here. The chairman has no business being in chair role, according to the township organization. She has no, Diane has no business being on the board. They were both, uh, told not to be on the board by the paid opinion of, uh, the attorney, uh, lad. Yet they just go ahead and do whatever they wanna do regardless of a professional opinion. And as far as the budget, the budget. You people, you're like having roofers or painters making medical decisions. You're making decisions against whatever the, the chief has outlined as far as the budget. It's, it's ludicrous. You know, the, the picking choose in, in your method of, uh, disputing what he has endorsed and carefully, uh, considered. It, it's crazy what you do. Um, you had no problem as far as the galleys having Blaster voting an increasing budget for four years, even though she should have been refused from being, uh, voting for anything regarding the fire department. Uh, the biggest thing really is the, uh, ISO rating too. No one talked about an increase that everyone, all the, all the taxpayers would be incurred if they, uh, didn't have a ISO three rating. It'd be far excess of the three hundred dollars for, for each person. And, uh, it's really kind of a scam here, you know, you got the last township meeting, they're talking about in the incorporation. The, uh, uh, you know, what's gonna happen after this little skirmish when, uh, the village of Holly, uh, starts, uh, taking, uh, different parcels, and it, they're gonna have a weird fire record. They're gonna dissolve, not look. And then the new fire department is gonna be Rose and, and Holly Village. So. The, the goal was to interrupt everything, and Diane was pretty effective at, uh, stacking them. Thanks for the three minutes.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments?
We have a lot of people in common.
Do we, do we have any more up there that have had their hand up for a while?
I can't see it. There was a while up, boy, you see one there.
What's that time?
That's me.
Oh, no, I don't see anybody with any. Okay, Captain Seal.
Alright, so I, I know you guys, it's all time, and I feel, uh, sorry, I keep, uh, something that I think need be said. And I do appreciate that you come together, and I hope that both boards will pass it. Although it doesn't encompass everything that's needed, I think it can get us by, uh, we saw. Changing the, 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 uh. Uh, one of the thing that would brought up before was Jancy County. Uh, Jancy County runs a county-wide EMS through all private companies. And there are numerous, and I mean numerous, we monitor their frequency. They better know what EMS available. They're all employed. And if you're in an outlining, outlining area, you're waiting thirty minutes. Thirty minutes for an ambulance for those that you don't know is ludicrous. Um, I think we have made a very good presentation here in the lives of the safe, beating our ALS, uh, scene within the time that we do. So consider that. Livingston County EMS, County Y EMS, same problem. Just also wanted to bring up, Jancy County private companies cannot run in Oakland County unless they meet our Oakland County medical control requirements. And they get licensed to run in our county because we have different protocols. Yeah, if they're not licensed, they're not coming over, so we can just call somebody from Jancy County, come over. That said, the private fire departments do run medical calls. They run high-party medical calls. Difference between that and us, they run out there in a fire and do the full medical first responder training, which is basically I can use CPR and I can put a bandage on your but if you're having a cardiac issue, you're not dead yet, I'm gonna hold your hand until you arrive comfortably. What good is that? Um. Yes, Mr. McDonald was right. This is a nationwide problem. The manpower is becoming, requirements that continue to be passed down from the Bureau of Fire Service and the fire, Commissioner of Fire Department, OCMC. None of these requirements, are they offering funds for rescue? We just get stuck meeting them. So that becomes a huge issue. One of the things I encourage is if anybody is interested, if the chief or myself wants to sit down and talk and roll with requirements, I'll avoid you to that for probably forty hours. Um. That said, there's so much intertwining that has to be thought. In particular, we mentioned the ISO rating. Well, the ISO rating as a chief's, it deals with manpower, very heavy on training. Um, we have got a parking training, right, so, um, I believe, uh, Chief Smith would attest to that. Um, it also intertwines into the staffing. Now, when we go back, we talked about three million in grants, right? Those are few members. And while, um, the gentleman over here said, yes, funny money because their grant runs out. That was one grant that we had, that we had to fund and employ. The rest of those were not, we didn't have to continue to fund those grants. They were free money to the two and three million dollars. And if we do not meet our ISO rating, if we do not be compliant with NFPA seventeen ten or NFPA seventeen twenty, we do not stand a chance to get those grants. I will tell you that Chief's got a grant in for safer right now. Uh, he asked me to write a grant for recruitment and retention. I just put a grant in for three quarters of a million dollars. Um, and it's very low rating. None of that grant will be employed in ranges that has to get forwarded to you. However, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a day grant brings in a whole lot of training for our department so we can keep up that training rating for ISO. But if we don't stay compliant with seventeen ten or seventeen twenty, it's no good. So everything intertwines in everything else. It can be very confusing, and I understand all. Uh, and, and I appreciate what was done there, so I, I'm not gonna go far off this pitch long already. But I appreciate that. Chief wants to give authority for anybody to come sit down, we feel free. Uh, and one other thing, uh, Chief, we discussed before, if any of the board members or residents wants to walk through the station and look at our assets that we have on site. And I can tell you what was donated and what that did for us that we gotta not have to do pay for. Uh, such as pneumatic struts and struts and all kinds of stuff, boats, trailers. Uh, lo and behold, we just got our boat trailers set up, and we even with the boat, uh, Chief purchased last year, it was so high and high. We surface water rescue trained everybody last year to cost a five thousand dollars total, paid for by the Safer Grant, right? And lo and behold, not only do we get two or three of those a year, we get one yesterday, or, uh, somebody struggling in the middle of seven lanes. Went out to their, uh, Jancy. Now, fortunately, there happened to be a guy right in front of the vehicle. We deployed our resource spot on. Had nobody pulled him in, we would have had him here within five or ten minutes because we had two rescue swimmers on the way there immediately. So there's just so much involved, I think, all that. I don't know how to fix it all. I just ask it to realize that. And it's not always the money, it's the ball.
Appreciate it, yeah? Any other public comments? Could we, could we make them count at the three-minute limits?
Okay, I went over. You can stop me.
I, I choose not to do that.
Oh, I have no issue.
Captain Seal?
Part of what we like to fight with your fun stuff.
Oh, sweet Jesus.
Alright, Randy King, Bernard Gerald Mohn, part of the fire department, stating to you that the fact that any, how it not exists. You guys have sat up there for meeting after meeting after meeting, and argued about over dollars, he says. That's all you fought about. What is your mission statement? Revisit your mission statement. Who are you serving? What is a dollar sense worth to any of our constituents, on your taxpayer, on your residents? You consider them at all? Not one of you mentioned a resident today. You gotta go out and you gotta figure out what you wanna provide for your residents. Okay, you've come to a conclusion what you wanna provide for your residents. It has a cost. Now, each one of you has to get out of your chairs, buy new shoes, knock on every door, and say, this is what we need to do. We need to vote up a miller. You need to have this money. We need to have this funding because we wanna provide this level of service. You don't wanna get out there and do the labor. You don't wanna get out there and network and let your residents know they're not all coming for you. Don't depend on, come sit, share this. They just don't. But they're the ones paying the bill. They get a bill every, every year. They go to the county, the county gives you your run back for them to pay it. You need to get out there and let your residents know, which is three, four, and this- You need to get out there and let your residents know what you're doing, or in this case, not doing it. You wanna cut down some budget, the budget cut down is gonna mean you're gonna lose services. You're gonna lose services. You better tell that resident, we're not gonna have an ambulance at your house in six months, because we bought them fifty thousand dollars. It's gonna be fifteen now. Need to get out there and tell these people that. Again, I'm a taxpaying Holly Township resident. That's my take on that. So I'd like to see you do that. Put your residents first. Money is very important. Money is what runs everything. But I think your residents need to know what you're arguing about, why you're having problems with twenty thousand here or fifty thousand there in a two-point-three-ninety-dollar budget for a service organization that you say you want them to support, but then you fight about it over several things. That's not supporting your residents. That's not representing your residents. You gotta do that. Get out there and get your residents involved. Say, I need extra money. I need a bigger mileage. Put it out there, propose it to them. If the residents voted down, they've chosen not to have the service. They voted up, they've chosen to have the service. It's not your decision to provide a service. It's your residents, it's your votes, it's your taxpayers. So just take that into mind. You need to remember, who are you serving? We know who we're serving, but we're bound by whatever this board makes decisions on. That's what I have to say. President, thank you. Again?
Uh, Doug Smith, Deputy Chief. I wanna, I'm really appreciative of the board passing a lot of the company's compromise, and the fact that there was a lot of very thoughtful conversation over a number of budget items. And although you all didn't agree on every point, we're at least discussing that. What I wanna throw out in this minute and a half is that, over the next year, you should have that same thoughtful conversation over the capital replacement. I've seen this happen a number of times throughout the years. We're at a critical point. We're only putting fifty thousand dollars into capital replacement. Yet if you look at our major pieces of our equipment, you've got four ambulances, a replacement cost is a hundred and forty thousand apiece. We've got two tanker, two tankers, and they're around four hundred thousand apiece. And you look at, and, and our pumbers at four hundred thousand. So if a pumper is gonna last us fifteen years, a tanker's gonna last us twenty, and ambulance is gonna last us five, if you take the number of those units, plus another hundred and fifty thousand or so in ancillary expenses, like the Lucas and our jaws off. That, we should be looking in the area of two hundred and thirty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain the type of equipment we have. And, you know, we were fortunate, well, I've heard the number three million thrown out in grants. When we used to purchase a fire truck, we would get all new hose, all new Scott packs, we'd get new nozzles. We've been funding those through some of the grants that we've received in the past. Not funding that the fire department is putting money away. And as Glenn points out, there's no guarantee that that's going to come. So we need to be planning for what the potential exposure is of these expenses. And it, it's gonna take more than one meeting to work out how you're ever gonna finance that. So I kinda throw that out as, in your long-range planning, blend that into your meetings. Thank you.
Any others online? I do have one hand up. There's Dustin Lato. I will.
Hey, hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Dustin Lato from, uh, Tiptickle Lake Road and Rose Township over here. Uh, I agree with what Randy Finkbener said, and maybe if it would come to you guys building a committee or something, it's obvious you guys have issues working together. So if you guys can work together, educate yourself a hundred percent on what the fire department does, and propose that to the township citizens. You, you need to have that education to what you're preaching to the citizens, so you can have them understand it, first of all. On another note, I work full-time for a department that uses private ambulance companies, and that's, that's terrible. It's a, it's a bad idea, honestly. And especially in the rural area that Nakva serves, we could be waiting a, a astronomical amount of time, and the call volume. Nakva does not have a high call volume, but some of the calls that we get in Nakva are just unbelievable, where you need an ALS ambulance on scene. And if you're waiting for a private one, it's, it's probably gonna mean a matter of life and death. So, I think that Chief, over time, has done the research and made Nakva go ALS for a reason. At some point, he made everybody believe in him for that. The research has already been done. He made believers in him. Why even consider going back now? So I, I think that's a poor thought to even have on the table. That's all I have.
Thank you for that. Are there any other public comments? Got all the hands up online too. Okay, seeing none, I'm looking as a jerk.